Good morning. We're honored today to have Bishop Carmody with us to do the invocation. We will be tabling 4A5, and we will be tabling the appointments to the Nuasis County Hospital District Board one more time.
And 4A3 and 4, Judge.
Three.
London stuff.
4A3.
And 4. And 4A11 is where I'm gonna try to table all stuff.
Alright, so 4A3, 4, 5.
11.
11, 11, 11, 11. Where's 11? 8, 9, 10, I don't have 11.
Just the right.
No, there isn't 11, appraisal district. Is that it? The appraisal district you're tabling?
Yeah.
Okay. Regular agenda. 3, 4, 5.
Mine says 4A11.
Mine ends at 10. Do I have a different agenda?
There was a revised one.
Thank you.
3, 4, 5.
Let's see. This one's better.
Good morning, good morning.
3, 4.
How you doing today?
5. Doing fine, Joe, how are you?
I'm good, Joe.
Yeah, there's a bunch on here, 11.
What's we know so far?
Okay, 6A, 6A. Okay, alright, here we go. Mic is on. Bishop, be ready to go. Please rise for the invocation today given by Bishop Carmody, followed by the pledge to the U.S. and Texas flag. Good morning, Bishop.
Good morning, Judge, good morning Commissioners. Good and gracious God, we come to you this morning with our many needs and our many petitions. We come to you because our faith tells us that what we ask you will listen and you will grant. Lord, bless our Commissioners' Court. Lord, we thank you for the help you have given our county judge, Judge Neal, so they can continue to serve the county with dedication and loyalty. Lord, help him as he continues to see us as his brothers and sisters, helping us to do great things. Lord, we thank you for protecting us from the hurricanes that have devastated part of our country. Lord, we pray that those in the Carolinas will receive help from people all over the country, so that they will recover and get back to normal again. Lord, continue to bless us here in Nuasis County, as we discern who will be our next county judge. Lord, guide the candidates to see us as their brothers and sisters, taking care of us, being loyal to members of the county. Lord, bless all of us as we do your will. Bring peace to our troubled world, bring peace to our county, and bring peace to our homes. Lord, bless all the families in this county, may they really experience joy and happiness as they relate to one another. Bless our Commissioners, as they give their time to helping one another and to helping all of us. Blessed is Lord, we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Please show them the pledge to the U.S. flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, honored and protected from all. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Bishop, thank you so much. I'll get you on just a minute. Honors, Your honors. We started this, uh, good morning. We started this morning at 10 o'clock. We're meeting in the Nuasis County Commissioners' Courtroom in the Nuasis County Courthouse. We have a quorum. All members of the court are present. I'd like to call for approval of the minutes of August 22nd, 27th, 28th, September 5th, and September 6th, please.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Well, 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 well. This is my favorite court meeting. Would the 4H people please come forward? For those uninformed, when the 4H people show up in their green jackets, they bring cookies. And so, you all come on up and tell us what you're doing and what's going on, please. We're glad to see you. You look, all of you look great this morning.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. We just want to let you all know that we appreciate all your support towards the 4H program. It is, we're fixing to get into National 4H Week here in the next month, and so we do always bring some cookies and whatnot, but a little review of this last year, the kids are very active. Of course, they active in the livestock show and other projects, but their pride and passion is serving our community. Community outreach, community service, couple of highlights, they were very involved in Hurricane Harvey relief efforts. They also just recently raised nearly $3,000 for Driscoll Children's Hospital, and so they, they really are passionate about serving their community, and so we, we wanted to thank you all for your support and recognizing them for, with the proclamation that will soon be read. I will let them, each one of them introduce themselves. We also want to let you all know that we're recognizing some volunteers here coming up soon, because without the parents and the adult volunteers in the program, these kids couldn't be able to do what they do, but I'll let each one of them introduce themselves.
Morning.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Hannah Kayford. I am with the Texas Roadowners 4H Club, and I'm the third Vice President of County Council.
Morning.
Good morning, I'm Jackson Grove of London High School. I am in West Osso 4H, and I am the President of that club.
Congratulations.
Good morning. I'm Hunter Lawrence with Bishop 4H. I'm a senior in high school, and I am the President of our club.
Good.
Morning. My name is Jake Truesdale, and I am chaplain 4H.
Morning.
Good morning. I'm Julia Gilliam. I'm the President of Flower Bluff Padre Allen 4H Club.
Morning. That's great.
I'll read the resolution, Judge.
Please.
Whereas, the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County is proud to honor the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&M Agrolife Extension Service for 111 years of providing experience-based education to youngsters throughout the Lone Star State, whereas the admirable program, which seeks to provide a learning experience for the whole child, including head, heart, hands, and health, helps young Texans to acquire knowledge, develop life skills, and form attitudes to enable them to become self-directed, productive, and contributing members of our society, whereas its more than 550,000 urban, suburban, and rural members, ranging in age from 8 to 19, hail from diverse ethnic and socioeconomic backgrounds, and truly represent a cross-section of the state, whereas the program undoubtedly could not have achieved the success that it has today, were it not for the service of its more than 22,000 volunteers, who have given generously of their time, talents, energies, and resources to the youth of Texas, whereas throughout its proud history, the 4H program has developed positive role models for countless Texans, and through its innovative and inspiring programs, continues to build character and to instill the values that have made our state strong and great. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County, Texas, that October 7th through 13th, 2018, is hereby declared National 4H Week in Nuasis County. Further, citizens of Nuasis County are urged to commend the 4H Youth Development Program of the Texas A&M Agrolife Extension Service and the many men and women who have made the program a success.
Need a motion?
No move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Good job.
Thank you. We do, I would just want to let you all know that we've got about 780 kids in the 4H program here in Nuasis County, and that puts us somewhere about third or fourth in the state in total enrollment, and so with 254 counties in the state, that's pretty good bragging rights for us here in the county, for you all as Commissioners, so.
Good job.
Anyway, yes, so, thank you very much.
Good morning. Yes. Real quick, since we are here, this, recognizing National 4H Week, Kyle did mention that we are having a volunteer recognition program, or event. Our volunteer recognition event happens annually, and it's our opportunity to say thank you to all those volunteers. We have a huge amount of 4H volunteers, but also other volunteers, master gardeners, master naturalists, you know, we all couldn't do what we do without all of them. And so that'll be taking place, Kyle has an invitation, it'll be taking place October 23rd, it's a Tuesday, from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. at the Fairgrounds, and it coincides with Day One of Ag Awareness Days, which, if you all know, Ag Awareness Days is a three-day event that is a volunteer-led event. We could not, we, meaning the agents, could not do that without them. We see about 1,400 third-grade students from the county over those three days. When I first came to this county, I think we were doing it one day, then it went to a day and a half, and now it's at three days. So it is a big event, and we also invite you to stay, if you can make it that morning for the event, stay and go through those sessions with those kids. You will see a lot of our volunteers, and you'll see a lot of these kids as well, in addition to some FFA members. So it's really one of the largest interdisciplinary events that we have, that is a volunteer-led event, so we hope to see you there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, here comes the good part. Let's get our picture made with these young people. Morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. Good morning. This is a good one? Only the good ones. You guys turn around, we're gonna get you. Thank you. Everybody in? Okay, are these parents?
Yes, they are parents.
Thank you.
Grandparents, yes.
Thank you.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Got some good ones.
Thank you. Wait a minute, wait, 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 wait.
One, two, three.
Thank you.
Excellent. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
One more. Oh, 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 sorry.
One more. Got it?
Excellent, yes.
Alright, thank you again.
Judge, thank you, yes. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Good seeing you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. You and me. They are, they are. Thanks.
Judge, for the next item, we have some people here from the Children's Advocacy Center. Want to come up? I'll go ahead and begin reading the resolution.
Okay.
Whereas, the mission of the Children's Advocacy Center of the Coastal Bend is to minimize the trauma to abused children and their families by uniting the efforts of public agencies and enlisting the support of the community, and to protect, restore, and transform the lives and futures of abused children. Whereas, the Coastal Bend Advocacy Center of the Coastal Bend, 2018 Pinwheels Family Fund Day strives to provide a safe, child-friendly environment, uniting families and partner agencies while raising awareness of child abuse in the Coastal Bend by providing free food and drinks, awareness information, and showcasing youth performers, whereas 1,410 pinwheels will be displayed, that represent the number of alleged child, child victims of sexual abuse, severe physical abuse, witnessed to violent crimes, and drug-endangered children. The Coastal Bend Advocacy Center of the Coastal Bend, forensically interviewed in 2017. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County, that Saturday, September 22nd, 2018, is Pinwheels Family Fund Day in the Coastal Bend.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Would someone care to speak? Thank you for being here.
Thank you guys so much for your continued support and your recognition today. Like the proclamation said, in 2017, we interviewed 1,410 children, and each one of these children will be recognized on Saturday by a pinwheel. So we have a big day planned Saturday, we invite everybody out, it's gonna be a lot of fun. It's not only our agency, but several other organizations in the Coastal Bend, like CAFSA, World for Children, the Wellness Foundation, we're all coming together to provide awareness for our community that day. So we invite everybody out, we'd love for you to come and see what it's all about, and meet some of the families that we have the opportunity to work with.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are you all volunteers or staff? Staff. Thank you. People, I'm sorry, would you identify yourself, please? Hello, Judge, how are you this morning? It's good to see you, Pen. Well, we thank you for what you do. It's a tough job.
Thank you all very much.
Got a lot of support. Thank you.
You bet.
Absolutely. Come on up here. Sure. Just don't, just don't steal our cookies. I think the reason Judge Benavides came is to look for cookies. Yeah. Cookie Monster. Thank you. Good to see you, thank you. Thank you, good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Good morning. Hello, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Here we go. Okay, sir. One up here. There we go.
Whoops. Easy. Thank you all very much. Thank you. The next is designating Wednesday as the day of the week to meet in regular term.
I'll read the now therefore. Now therefore, be it ordered by the Commissioners' Court of Nuasis County, Texas, that Wednesday is hereby designated as the day of the week in which the court shall convene in regular term each month during the fiscal year.
So moved. Second. Motion, second, all in favor, signify, I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Thank you. I have the certificate. Okay. Yeah, I know, are we reading anything, or?
Certificate, read it.
Chris, come on up around here. Okay, here we go, guys. Chris, come over here, please. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. It does not seem possible that he is retirement age. Chris, how long have you been with the TechStod?
Thirty-four years total.
Thirty-four years. He started very early, but seriously, we're gonna lose a great friend in Nuasis County, South Texas, someone who's worked very closely with me for years, prior assignment, this one. Chris is leaving, thank you very much, leaving as district engineer. We wish him the very, very best. He's done a great job. He's been our friend, he got the New Harbor Bridge started, and with any luck at all, you'll be around to see it finished. But at any rate, we're delighted this morning to recognize his contributions to transportation, to Nuasis County, to the state of Texas and South Texas, and Chris, you're gonna be missed. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Judge. Appreciate that. I want to thank the Judge and the Commissioners' Court for the honor this morning. It's been a pleasure and a privilege to work with Nuasis County on various transportation projects throughout the year, and for those of you who do not know, do not ever underestimate, we would not have a New Harbor Bridge if it had not been for the unparalleled support of the Judge and the Commissioners' Court in Nuasis County to make that happen. It was a community effort, and they stepped up to the table. Having worked with my counterparts in many other areas of the state, I can tell you we are very blessed. Many, many communities do not have the relationship we have here with Nuasis County and their cooperative spirit, and the many other projects that we have planned for in the future, I see nothing but bright things ahead. So it's been a wonderful experience of working for TechStod and working with Nuasis County, and I thank you and the Commissioners' Court so much again, sir.
Thank you, Chris, good luck.
Yes, sir.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oops, I'm sorry. It's alright. Good deal. Thank you. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Your Honor, I was asked by the judges back if we can move item 4A1 up, they have to get back to the bench.
That's what I planned to do.
Hey, Chris, Chris.
Thank you.
Wanted to know that I called your office yesterday, I didn't know you had already retired. Say, is that, this desk is clean, he's left, and he ain't coming back. So I gave you, I gave you assignment to Mr. Trevino.
Well, we all are.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
In case anyone is a little warm, it's not you, it's the chiller, it's down, and so we're working on that now in the courthouse. In fact, we have a presentation this morning on chillers, so we'll be talking about that as well, but it is warm in here, and they're trying to get it up as quickly as they can. I'm gonna move the agenda item 4A1 up to the front.
Judge, can I just, is there coming up? Could I go ahead? I'm not sure how long I want to be here, I'm just not feeling good.
That's fine.
And so, I'd like to table, move to table 4A3, 4, and 11, which were items that I was presenting today. 4A3, 4, and 11 would be the ones I would move, move to table.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Sure.
One for, I believe it's the hospital district, which one is that?
11.
I believe that, could we make the one reappointment, because I think that time's ran out. When we had a meeting with him before, I think it ran out in September, do we need to go ahead and appoint?
I believe they serve until reappointed, isn't that right?
Okay, because you brought that up.
They do, and, and, those are just, I'm not, I'm not on those, that's not the, one of these three, I'm gonna let you all do whatever you all want to do on that.
Okay.
Alright.
But 4A3, 4, and 11 are my motions to table, and I think.
3, 4, and 11?
3, 4, and 11, yes, sir. And I don't, Judge, did you have another one you wanted to table on the regular agenda?
5 was on there.
Okay, and 5 in, as well.
Alright, 3, 4, 5, and 11, we have a second. Is there a second, Joe, with that?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We'll leave 6A open right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Your Honor, good morning, sorry to delay you. Thank you for, thank you for being here.
Judge, just very quick, y'all passed a resolution regarding the new budgeting item for the magistrate's court, we're asking that y'all dissolve that and go back to how it was. We need to vet that a little bit further before we, before we present it to the Commissioners' Court.
Alright, so you're asking me to table this item, is that, no?
No, I'm asking for that you, you dissolve the resolution that was passed in regards to the new budgeted items that created the new position and lowered the amount of time for the part-time positions, and go back to how it was last year.
What we'll have to do for this budget item, and we want to make sure we comply by the rules, we worked with the county attorney, what we're recommending is table this item now, we'll bring up the next court, we'll do a reclassification to bring it back as it was, with a budget changer, so there's no effect on the budget, so it meets all the requirements that the law states.
Alright, then we'll do that prior to October, no?
Whatever the next court is.
In October.
What we, we suggest, we keep the functioning as is.
Okay.
We'll do a reclassification as soon as we can.
So we're tabling it today, you're gonna bring back wording that will satisfy the request of the, of the judges for the next agenda item.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, I have motion to table, is there a second? Any other questions? All in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign. Judge, you have any comments? You good?
I don't, thank you very much.
We're good, thank you all, Commissioner.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, it's good to see you all. Thank you. Ma'am?
While ago, tabled 4A5, and that does, that's on the Willcoff, it's on Lone Oak Park, that should have been on there to table.
Okay, so 5 should not be tabled?
4A5 should not be tabled.
So I amend my motion to not table 5, and table 3, 4, and 11 only. If that, I just need a second on that.
Second. Alright.
So 5 still on, 5 would still be?
5 is still gonna be, is on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
11 is off?
3, 4, and 11.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, are we straight now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Public comment is reserved for items not on the agenda? Do we have any public, oh, ha, thank you. 4A5, 4A5, Christopher, 4A5, Christopher?
Morning, Judge, morning Commissioners. Christopher, Nuasis County Emergency Manager. Just a very brief update on our impacts from our rain and subsequent flooding from last week and this weekend. We are not out of the woods yet. Significant rain fell across Nuasis County and the Coastal Bend. We continue to monitor the impacts, we're working with our local jurisdictions, with our volunteer organizations active in disaster, you know, there's still water out there that's having, making people's lives not, not good. So we're working on that, monitoring it, working with the VOADS, American Red Cross, checking in with everybody, some specific areas in the county that, that we've been working on, and then also monitoring the potential for some Nuasis River flooding from some releases here in the next, near future, too. So we'll keep you all informed, as we did all weekend and all week, but I just wanted to get in front of you this morning, let you know that we, it's not over yet.
Very good. Questions? Concerns? Christopher, you all have done a great job. Tyner?
Can we just set up, set up a meeting with TechStod on that 24, kind of row 24 and 67?
Yes, we can work on that, no problem.
We released, Tyner. Tyner.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. We released a press release early on in what was going on in the Gulf. How many hits did you have to that?
The first news release we did on Facebook had 47,000 views, which.
Unbelievable.
Which Tim pointed out, we beat the color times.
Well, that's great. That's, that's what happens when you try to get out in front of these things, and Tyner did, and our crew did a great job, and I want to thank you all for that very much. The other public comment was in reference to an agenda item, okay, and I think, I think I just left it open, 4A5, it's still open. So when we get there, you're welcome to comment on that, alright? Any other public comment for items not posted on the agenda? Not posted on the agenda, fine. Consent agenda items are items that will be voted on by the court on one vote, unless a member of the public or a member of the court asks that item be pulled and individually discussed or tabled. I will now call for a public comment on consent agenda items 3A through 3S, 3A through 3S.
Judge, we've been asked to table item N.
N?
N, yes.
Alright, any others? See now, in court, Commissioners' Court, members have any questions on consent agenda items 3A through 3S, and we will be calling for a motion to table N.
H and S.
I'm sorry, which one?
H and S.
H, 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 oh boy. H and?
HS.
Motion to table N.
Alright. Alright, I have motion, second, table, item number, consent agenda item number N, all in favor? Aye, opposed, same sign. Now, John, you want to pull H?
H.
Please.
Yes, yes.
Yes, go ahead, please.
And Tyner did, and our crew did a great job, and I want to thank you all for that very much. The other public comment was in reference to an agenda item. Okay? And I think, I think I just left it open. 4A5, it's still open. So, when we get there, you're welcome to comment on that. All right? Any other public comment for items not posted on the agenda? Not posted on the agenda, fine. Consent agenda items are items that will be voted on by the court on one vote unless a member of the public or a member of the court asks that item be pulled and individually discussed or tabled. I will now call for a public comment on consent agenda items 3A through 3S. 3, 3A through 3S.
Judge, we've been asked to table item N.
N?
N, yes.
All right, any others? See now, in court, Commissioners' Court, members have any questions on consent agenda items 3A through 3S? And we will be calling for a motion to table N.
H and S?
I'm sorry, which one?
H and S.
H, 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 oh, boy. H and?
HS.
Motion to table N.
All right.
Second.
All right, I have motion, second table, item number, consent agenda item number N. All in favor? Aye, post same sign. Now, John, you want to pull H?
H and?
Please.
Yes, yes.
Yes, go ahead, please.
So, item H, Marvin? Yeah, sorry.
Agent, what is?
The, the last item, S. That'll be the one.
S, Sam.
Good morning.
Good morning, Christopher. Judge.
Thanks for, for bringing these out here, and we know that it's important to get these properties back on the tax roll and, and hopefully get some responsible citizens that will make use of these properties. So, I'd just like to, to remind us and bring this up that we, we passed something about a year ago with the help of the county attorney and our former public works director as far as kind of a, a landowner's rights and responsibilities type of statement. And I want to make sure that that message is still getting out to people who are bidding on these pro, on these properties, that they may not have utilities that are running or working or connected to them. Are they, are they aware of that? Or is this document given to them? Are they referenced somewhere?
We attach that document to our list of properties with our bid form that we send out to anybody that's interested in bidding on a property. And then, when they pay us, if, when the bids are approved and they pay us for the property, we send them a letter to tell them that their bid's approved and to bring us the money. Then, we also send out a form for them to fill out on how they want their deed prepared. And we also have them initial that form, and that stays in our file. So, yes, we do make everybody aware of it. We also attach it to the information that goes out to the tax sales every month on the courthouse steps. And so, and we, and we, when we, when we make our announcements, we draw attention to that says, if you're buying this property, this is what you need to be aware of, and, this is what's not going to happen, and this is what you may have to do on your own, which is basically what it covers. And yes, we draw attention to that in both instances, at tax sales and at resales. We sure do.
And it just, once again, you know, we, we understand people are buying property that they can afford. We understand that, and some, people want a place just to call their, their own and be able to build on that property. But two, we felt it was important as a county to make sure that, you know, when we get calls or questions about why aren't these services connected to my property, that they're made aware, well, if you've bought your property recently, within the last year or so, we're making you aware that, that this is, that it's kind of buyer beware. I mean, it's, it's what you have. It's what, what is there. It's not anything where we're going to build up roads for you or utilities. And so, I, I hope that, I'm glad to hear that that's being pushed out there, and hopefully residents are aware of that, so.
Yes, sir. We tell them as is, where is, no guarantee of anything, multiple times, and we put it in writing also.
And it's also in English and Spanish?
Yes. Good. Good, thank you for thinking of that. Now, I see just a lot of these properties, Judge, or a lot of them are in precinct 3, and so, you know, it's important for me to-
I understand.
That we recognize that, and we, like I said, we want people to move in. We want people to live there, but as they realize that there may not be a water connection or a paved road that leads up to their home, and these are some of the things they're going to have to take on, that extra cost, so just to be careful with that.
Yes, sir.
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, these are properties that haven't paid their property taxes. They're delinquent, correct?
These properties are, are ones that, where we have gone through our collection process to the point where we filed a lawsuit in state district court, prosecuted it forward, took a judgment, had an order of sale issued to the sheriff. The sheriff attempted to sell the property on the courthouse steps at public auction for the amount due against it in taxes, penalties, and interest, and no one was willing to make that offer. When that happens, Commissioner, the properties are struck off or sold back to the taxing entities, and a deed, the sheriff's tax deed is recorded in the name of the county as trustee for themselves and the other taxing units for whom you collect. And then, we put these properties on a list of struck off or tax resale properties, put a sign on them, solicit offers, and when we get those offers, which are generally less than what is owed, and we bring those forward to the Commissioners' Court, school district boards, city councils, all the units that are involved, and you each have to vote it up or down, accept it or not. And if you all, the entities vote to accept it, then it's a, it's a deal.
So, they're all uninhabited, I'm assuming, all the properties? No one's living in them?
In this instance, yes, they're all vacant, or mainly vacant lots is what most of these are.
Is it, who's doing the mowing? Because we know that these properties are growing up. So, who's doing the mowing?
And if the property's located in the county, nobody's doing the mowing. Because you, you guys don't go and do work on private property. You've got a different set of rules, as you know, to operate by than the city does. If it's located in a home rule charter city, then it's the city's responsibility. Now, once the property's been struck off at tax sale, if, for example, the city of Corpus Christi has to go out and mow the property to abate a nuisance after it's been struck off and the deed's recorded, then those amounts that are, that they charge for those fees or for that work, those amounts are considered maintenance expenses under the property tax code, and those will be paid first out of the sale proceeds.
That's where I was going.
Yes, those would get paid first out of the sale proceeds if the work was done after the property was struck off, and then the court costs and cost of sale get paid, and the remainder of the funds get distributed prorated to the taxes.
Okay.
And if there's other, if there are other city liens for work that occurred prior to the sale that were part of our judgment, the net sale proceeds get distributed prorated between the taxes and the city liens, and the balances get written off.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I have one more. You know, one, this letter here says the, the Noises County will recover $12,700 in delinquent tax revenue, $17,000 in court cost. And maybe it's a question for Dale. Talking about $30,000 here, so how much of that do we keep in, in Noises County? How much goes to the state for, for court costs? And then, and the money, the second part is, where does it go to? Does it go back to general account?
Well, as he was saying, this, these properties are in multiple taxing entities. So, the amount that's showing as recovering as delinquent taxes, we only get our share of the delinquent tax. The rest goes to other taxing entities that were there. The other costs are the court cost. If they're regular court cost, the majority of those court costs are state court cost, and we get only 1% or 10% of those costs. So, those amounts would go to the general fund, yes.
Do we know what amount that, can we, can we know? I think last time I brought up that I'd like to know at the end how much actually went into the general account from those monies, you know?
Right now, when, when we collect the, the court costs, we put it as a liability until we're able to do the quarterly report to the state. And then, at that time, we determine how much we get from the state and how much we have to pay to our, we get to ourselves. And it's based on how we, we file and, and make sure the state, that hasn't changed any rules to make sure we still get our 10%. So, so there are some court costs that we don't get any of it, and then it all goes to state, but majority of it's 10%.
Well, most of the court costs, you don't get it all, but, but you get the balance of the court costs. I mean, after, after you pay the court-
Most court costs, if it's regular, regular court costs, if it's, if it's a clerk fee or a sheriff's fee, we get 100% of that. But if it's actual court cost, then, then we get 10% of that, that value.
But I'd like to know what, what's the, what's the amount of which do we get from those $30,000, what exactly goes into?
If they were all state court costs of 30,000, we would get 3,000, 10%.
That's it.
I would, I would tell you that in a typical delinquent tax case, you know, the filing fee is about $245, something like that, and that's the state fee.
Yes.
The rest of it is going to be when we issue citations to the local constables or the out-of-county constables to serve on the defendants. And those are going to go back to their offices. Those constables are going to get paid for those. The abstractors fees or fees that our firm encourages, we pay those upfront, and we get paid back on those. Same thing with the publication fees when we publish a tax sale in the newspaper. We get those fees back from the district clerk, but we pay them upfront. Linebarger pays them upfront. And then, you've got the sheriff's fees for the levy and execution of the tax sale when we struck it off. Those all go back to the sheriff or the constables. So, it's really just the, the filing fee and a couple of other things that, that are actually state fees, and, and the biggest part of this stuff is going to be local and, and also stuff that we, that we pay upfront.
Well, it was good because actually in total, you collected $109,000, so $109,000. That was pretty good, but it goes to all the other entities, right?
Right, and, and the figure on the front of the letter there, well, $109,000 is the value. That's the, that's the actual tax appraised value of these properties. That's what you're putting back on your tax roll. So, if this goes back on your tax roll next year and you're taxing it at around 60 cents a hundred, then you're looking at another $6,000 or $7,000 in tax revenue next year off these properties. But your portion, the county's portion of the, of the sale proceeds in, in this group of properties is $12,705.92.
Okay. Go ahead.
Very good.
All righty.
John, you want to make a motion to approve H?
Make motion.
All right, all in favor, signify. I'm saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. You want S as well?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Let's see, so last time we voted on this about a month or so ago. There's a lot of work that was done, and appreciate the county clerk hearing some of the concerns that were brought up. Of course, the court was, who pushed this along to be more inclusive of areas. I know that there's some adjustments here, and so, I just wanted to get some clarification. So, we have, I think before, my understanding was, it seemed like most of these voting centers, these early voting centers, were going to be open all two weeks, and now it's showing that there's some dates that some are open to only certain dates and some are closed. And so, I just wanted to get clarification as to why.
So, this is actually the first schedule that we presented, and we, and then we made the recommendation just to have them all open for the entire two weeks. Well, not all can be open for the entire two weeks, specifically CCAT. So, and then there's several that cannot be open on the weekend. So, in order to keep it to where it, there's not a disproportionate number of polling locations or early voting, one Commissioners' Court precinct compared to the other, we just went back to the original because we had worked it out then that, you know, that the polling locations was not a disproportionate amount. Now, I want to point out, the concern was with A&amp;M, and I just would like to point out that past, I don't, back to 2008, 2010, 2012, 2014, they had one day early voting. In 2016, we had three days early voting at Texas A&amp;M. In this election, we're having five days, and it's the last week, and it's seven to seven, plus their election day vote center.
So, you, you kept that, so we're not changing anything on election day, then?
No.
So, this is all early voting, and it's up till seven for the students that will be?
Right, seven to seven, the last week, Monday through Friday.
Okay. And so, is, I mean, is there a reason why you decided this, or is what?
I just explained.
No, but I mean, is, is the law, is?
Yeah, it's the law. Yeah. The law states that you cannot have, it cannot be disproportionate amount from one Commissioners' precinct to another more than double. So, this, again, goes back to-
So, because Army Depot and A&amp;M Corpus Christi, those are in precinct four?
They're in four, correct.
Four.
Correct. So, that, so they're precinct four, which would make it a total of seven in his.
I mean, I understand if you're saying it's, it's the law, it's what, what we have in statute. My, my only thing with that is, you know, Army Depot, you have people that live from all over the community. It's not just people from precinct four that would necessarily be voting there. Same thing at A&amp;M Corpus Christi. The last election that we had, I was looking at the numbers, and I had some people from precinct three voting in Slitter Bond. And so, I mean, obviously, that's a reason why we have the vote centers, but I think it's, it's, for me, it doesn't seem like so much about being disproportionate. It's, those, I think, are great hubs that get a good mix of numbers. I don't know if you know them off the top of your head, but it seems to me that you would have people from all four precincts going and voting there. So, that's why I would just think it would be beneficial to keep them open longer. I can understand CCAT. I can understand. I mean, obviously, they're not really working on the weekends. The university, I know that they've been difficult to try to get this set up, and I'm, I'm glad you said it was a week now, five days? So, is that something that we're looking at, and we got to get the law changed, or what?
Yeah, you had to get the law changed with that. Because it, it goes by polling locations, early voting.
So, I was counting up mine in precinct three. So, I have the Banquete ISD. We have David Berlanga. We have Deafen Heart of Here, and we have Delmar College, Greenwood, and then Johnny Calderon. So, that is six locations, right? One, two, three, four, five, six. So, because Greenwood is like, really like, on the edge. If you look at the, if you look at the map-
Oh, yeah, it is. It's what-
I mean, it's going to be, it really, we're going to have a lot of voters from precinct two and precinct three voting there, even though technically I, you know, my precinct gets counted as it is because it is in precinct three. I would say it would be a good 50-50 mix between the two, which is fine. But once again, I think the way maybe the law is created is kind of a little weird, so.
And you know what? I think that is something to look at. You know, I sit on the legislative committee for the County Clerk Association, so County District Clerk Association. That's something that, and the elections committee, so.
And, and John, honestly, my district's kind of weird, too, because it's got, you know, so many different, like Porte, Flower Bluff, whatever. Honestly, A&amp;M Corpus Christi was not one that I wanted in my precinct, but I just went along because everybody else wanted it. I, I don't, I think my precinct is more than covered without A&amp;M Corpus Christi, so if we've got too many, I'd take it out. But because everybody else wanted it, so I, I think five days is plenty.
I'm not complaining. I just wanted some clarification, make sure that we're-
I'm just weighing in.
Why we're at where we're at, because we had a lot of people show up, and we heard them. Like I said, I think we did hear what their concerns were. I'm glad that A&amp;M is going to be there represented for five full days and on election day, and that you're keeping it extended hours. So, I'm glad that, that we are doing that, so. All right, just wanted to discussion and make a motion to, to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. All right. Now, we took care of number one, right?
Judge, I'm sorry, we need to go back really quick. We've been asked to table item R on the consent as well.
Motion to table R.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, post same sign. That's it? No, no, I'm talking about on the consent agenda.
Yeah, it's not.
Do what?
You haven't voted.
Haven't voted on what? On the whole agenda?
No, on, on the consent.
Is there a thing left to vote on?
They voted on individual-
No, I, I got it. When I voted on the consent agenda items, with the exception of those that have been tabled by members of the court, remember, all right, except those tabled by members of the court, which is, now, let's see if I can get this right, guys. A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, we voted on, I, J, K, L, M, N?
Is tabled.
Tabled. N, O, P, Q, R, tabled?
Tabled.
And S voted on. Okay, got it? I need a motion. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, post same sign. All right, that takes care of the consent agenda, right? Regular agenda items, did we discuss and do something with one for the judges? We tabled that? We tabled that?
Yes, sir.
And that's been tabled, right? Item two, is that still open?
No, it's no effect now because they took care of it under one.
All right, so move to table two. I need a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I pose same sign. All right. Three and four have been tabled. Five is still open. Is that correct, Commissioner Vaughn?
It is.
Yours, yours. Go ahead.
Okay. Um, can I get the representatives from Wilcox to come up front?
Absolutely.
Morning.
Hi. How are you all doing?
I'm, I'm William Smith, President of Wilcox Oil and Gas, and I've brought some associates with me.
Good morning, gentlemen. How are you?
May I introduce yourselves?
Good morning. Uh, my name is Ray Blackhall. I'm an independent geologist from Houston, Texas.
Thank you.
Morning. My name is Ted Snyder. I'm with Lem Operating Company. We're a partner of Wilcox Oil and Gas.
Good morning, sir. Good to see you both. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Ray Ledesma, also with Lem.
Good. Good to see you all. Okay.
Judge, the citizens out in this area by Lone Oak Park are very concerned because Wilcox is going to be drilling a well out there. So they have requested, and I appreciate you coming before here to talk to the citizens. Um, want you to be good neighbors if you're gonna do that, so that we've got a lot of questions, so I'm just gonna get started. They've given me some, and I've got some of my own. So I think the first one I'm gonna, do you wanna say something?
I was just gonna say, do you want me to go through this brief PowerPoint?
Yeah, go ahead. I, yes, that's what, I forgot you had one. Go ahead.
I want to do that, and that might answer a few of the questions.
Okay.
Uh, I wanna thank the commissioners in Oasis County for inviting me to come. I'm hoping that we can, uh, answer questions and deal with the concerns that these people may have. We've drilled a lot of wells in Harrison Liberty County, which is very popu- populous, near houses. We know what it takes to, to drill near, uh, near people's homes and, and do it safely. And so, I'd like to run through a, a brief, um, PowerPoint here. Wilcox Oil and Gas acquired oil and gas mineral leases in and around the vicinity of Lone Oak Park. We have a prospect we feel that has oil, and we want, want to drill it. Wilcox Oil and Gas and their affiliate logistical energy management, that's Lem, plan to drill the well in Live Oak Park in northwestern Oasis County. Lem will be the operator of this well, not Wilcox. The well will be, be drilled in accordance with the rules and regulation of the Texas Railroad Commission, which is the state agency that regulates oil and gas operations in Texas. The well will be drilled in accordance with the conditions set forth by a letter I received from Judge Neal that had seven specific conditions that we have to live up to. Judge, did you wanna say anything about that letter? No? Okay.
Those are standard.
Yeah, okay. Uh, drilling operations will, will be conducted in, in such that there is minimal disruption to the park users and surrounding residents of the first county subdivision. We're planning to drill this well directionally, so we'll get that, the surface location as far away from residents as we can, and then drill the well on an angle to where we want it to reach the target. I have a figure that I can show that might explain this, uh, better. We also plan to install noise dampeners, barriers around the well site to, to keep the noise levels down. The operator Lem will maintain necessary liability insurance, and Lem will acquire the necessary permits and report to the Texas Railroad Commission. Lem will also provide in Oasis County and residents in the community notices of all activities and, and updates. This is a, an aerial photo of, of the area. The Lone Oak Park is here. We would like to set up a, a surface location for our, whoops. Getting ahead of myself. Surface location for the well on the park and drill our bottom hole location to the north. So what's going on here? So that our, our location will be further away from residences. The directional well basically will go down straight, then it will have an angle curve, and it'll drop down straight into the target zone, um, so that, that's how you get your location further away. We, you know, we can't drill right in someone's backyard. This figure just shows an example of noise dampeners, barriers that are a temporary structure that's put up around the drilling well to keep the noise levels down. And I've got a couple pictures here. The, the park is sitting right here, and this is a, a map from the Texas Railroad Commission that shows the historical oil and gas and wells drilled, and the dry holes drilled in the vicinity. And you can see there are a lot of oil and gas wells that have been drilled in this vicinity. The green, the green are oil wells, the red are gas wells, and the, the black circles are dry holes that didn't produce oil or gas. This last figure is a zoomed-in area of the park with the historical wells that have been drilled around it in the past. So the drilling has been going on here for quite some time. That's all the, that's, that's the end of my brief, um, presentation. We'd be glad to field questions now.
Okay. I've got quite a few, so just hang in there. How long has Wilcox been in business?
Wilcox is in bus- business since nineteen eighty-seven.
Okay, and Lem?
Lem, Lem has just recently been formed, but, uh, the, the constituent parts of Lem have been in business for thirty years.
Okay, who, what are the parts of Lem?
Well, there's, okay, I, I've been, uh, as Tag Operating has been in business since nineteen eighty-seven.
Tag?
Yes.
Okay.
I've been a petroleum engineer since nineteen, well, for forty-one years now. Started out as, with major oil companies, smaller and smaller independents. So we formed a team, being Lem, and was recently incorporated.
Okay, so y'all recently did that together as a group, okay?
Yes, of course. And I work very closely with Bill, both do geological, geophysical interpretation, look for oil and gas. And I've been an independent operative for many years.
Okay. Okay, okay. What is your current status and estimated timeline for permitting of this well with the Railroad Commission?
Sure, okay.
There's still a number of things that we're working on. We're, we're doing a lot, a lot of work in, in evaluating surface, uh, situations. Approximately, we would expect to be drilling first quarter of next year, targeting February.
Okay. Okay, um, so you said you're gonna drill for oil, right? Is there a possibility that you'll change when you get in there and do for gas as well? Cause I know that they've had oil and gas. Is there a possibility that could happen?
You always get a little bit of both.
Okay.
It's a question of the ratio as to how the well is actually classified, so, so.
A, a lot of times, you, you don't know. You don't know until you drill. You know, we, we can, we think what we might see from offset wells, offset production. Sometimes you get oil, sometimes you get gas, sometimes you get nothing. So we think our main targets would be oil prone, but there may be some gas also.
Okay. Okay, and I think our big concern here is trucks going in and out, what the rig's gonna look like, so are you gonna be using a closed-loop system? Because you do one or the other, you're gonna have the reserve pit, or you're gonna have those tanks. So which one are y'all gonna do?
Oh, no, we're looking at a closed system.
A closed system. Because this, they're really concerned over there, cause this area, and y'all need to look at this, um, so much flooding out in that area, can y'all, so much flooding, and they're worried about all the stuff that's gonna get into their homes and into the ground, so they're concerned about that. So what are y'all gonna do to make sure that doesn't happen?
Yeah, if it's gonna be a boggy area, that will have to be built up so that, uh, the location itself would not be subject to flooding, but, you know, there's always a redundancy of safety factors in place on any such operation, uh, to, to avoid any spills. Uh, we take extreme cautions in, in, uh, in the mechanical, in the production process, as well as in the physical setup, in, in establishing berms that are more than adequate to hold the, the capacity of any tank, if that might be.
And I know you do, because I'm in the oil field business as well, and they are very proactive on safety. I know that for a fact. Almost over the top sometimes. Okay, um, as far as how you're gonna get in there, I'm trying to figure out how you're gonna, is it gonna be a big rig? How big's the rig gonna be?
The well is an eighty-two hundred foot.
Eighty-two hundred foot?
It's not gonna be a super large rig.
Okay, you're talking about?
But big enough to drill the directional. It has to be able, have the capability and the pulling power to drill directly.
Okay, so how, where are you coming in?
Probably by.
Uh, by which road, you mean?
Which road are you coming in?
Yeah, it'll, well, this is, this is part of our, our ongoing evaluation, and this is subject to change, but, uh, there we go. Yeah, we'll, we'll need it. As it stands now, we'll be coming in Lone Oak here. There's a slough in this section right here. He's a mouth now. And then, and, 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 here in order to add, uh, allow access into the park itself.
So you're actually gonna come straight off of six-twenty-four, and you're gonna turn right into the park?
Correct. I mean, if it's possible, if it's possible, you know, off of six-twenty-four here, that would be desirable, but that may not be feasible, but it's one of the options that we're exploring.
Yeah, cause I was wondering if there was a road back there behind. Have y'all checked that?
Behind coming off six-twenty-four.
There's, there's a church there, and there's some land there, so I'm wondering if there is a road, cause you're gonna be coming straight through their neighborhood, basically.
Well, that would be desirable. We're aware of that.
Yeah.
We're aware, it's a very nice neighborhood.
Yes.
The people that live there take a lot of pride in it, it's very obvious, and, and we respect that, and want to minimize our impact and, and preserve their, you know, their lifestyle as much as possible. Um, and to that end, we are looking for other ways to, to avoid, you know, interference with, with, with.
Okay.
The element of the property. So, so that, that is an option. That is an option that we're looking at. It has not been, uh, fully examined. And, and, you know, there's a lot of things that we're still looking at, and, and we came here today because this meeting was convened, and we want to address you and, and other people who are concerned. Uh, but we haven't really gone down the checklist.
Sure.
And looked at every, every possibility that, that, you know.
I just want the information you can give me. Okay, if you're drilling eighty-two hundred feet, you, that's probably gonna take a week to maybe two weeks to drill?
It might take two weeks.
About two weeks. It shouldn't take any longer than that, unless you run into some kinda problems.
Right.
Right? Okay. So you're gonna have all the big trucks coming in there if you make a well, right?
Well, yes.
It's gonna be eighteen-wheelers, right?
There will be eighteen-wheelers, it'll be transports.
Okay, so there's gonna be a concern in there for that road, especially in the neighborhood. What do y'all do? Do y'all do anything about that?
Well, if the road is inadequate, then we'll do whatever we need to, to shore that up. Are you referring to the, the structure of the road, or the?
I, I, you know, big trucks, this is a subdivision, so if you've got big trucks, it's gonna be really bad on those roads. So are y'all gonna repair what you mess up?
Absolutely.
Okay. I mean, in the past, I know oil companies have done that, so.
It will be repaired better than it is now.
Yes, and that's usually the, that's usually the thing.
Also, I believe one of the conditions is that we do a road agreement with the county.
This is correct.
For repairs and maintenance, so that's, that will be handled.
Okay, that was one of the questions that they had. Um, since the park floods, uh, frequently, what action will be taken to prevent spillage during the flooding periods? If, if you can't answer it, you can answer it to us later, and we'll get it to the citizens.
Right, it'd be my plans for operations, and Ted and I have not gone over everything. First, we'd have to build up that, those locations. We'll have to bring in collegiate and build up a pad, drill pad.
Okay.
Okay, cause we, obviously aren't gonna go into water. And then, it'd be my plan to build a berm around the actual drill pad itself and keep fluids inside that pad.
Okay.
If there's, that, that much rain, from what I've seen, I've seen on this photograph.
Well, when it rains a lot, they get flooding, and that, I think that's their major concern right now. Um, we talked about the noise limiting actions, and you're planning on putting up barriers. Um, so, give me a percentage, how much noise does that knock out?
Um, there's some figures. I've drilled, my personal experience, I've drilled ninety wells in the Barnett Shale, up north, north of Fort Worth. I've drilled within the city limits of, uh, Trophy Club, Town of Aurora, Arlington, Denton, and Fort Worth. And we put up these barriers, and we had to limit the amount of noise in decibels.
Mm-huh.
Can't remember the rating, but those barriers that were shown in the photograph, I can give you a, a number at a later date, I don't have it with me, as to how much, how much of decibels at a certain distance people will actually hear in terms of sound.
I've been up there, and I saw what you guys did, especially when it was really busy way back when, and there were a lot around that city, and it seemed to be controlled, controlled, cause my son lives up there. He, and there wasn't one very far from where he lived, but I can understand the concern.
Commissioner Vaughn, some, something else we've done in the past too, is if someone is very close to the well, and they feel like they're impacted by the noise and disruption, we could put them up in a hotel during the drilling of the operation.
That was actually one of their questions. They said compensation for motel, hotel while drilling is going on, how much per day? Is it paid upfront or after their receipts are submitted? Are also breakfast or meal compensation since persons won't be home to cook? They were very good at writing this, weren't they? Yeah.
I think so. I mean, I think that's fair, you know, if we were putting them up in a hotel, they could, they could have meals, stay in a, you know, for a, for a couple of weeks.
We just finished a well in Liberty County, six houses even closer than these, and we made a cash offer for compensation.
Can you talk in the microphone? I don't think they can hear you back there.
We either made the offer to cash, a cash compensation amount to the people who lived in the immediate area around the well.
Okay.
Or the alternative being to go to a hotel with a per diem.
Okay, all right.
That, that well was actually very similar to this one. It was a directional well. We were actually drilling from the back of a lot, uh, and we were significantly closer to any houses than we'd be here, and did we offer the compensation to six?
Six homes.
Six homes. They all took the cash equivalent rather than going to a hotel, though.
Okay, it'll be their choice.
That'd be the option.
One further comment, we just spent eighty thousand dollars to repair the roads, much to their satisfaction.
Okay.
That's Liberty County, Texas.
Okay. Will liability for neighborhood pollution damage during the drilling and production, like the trees, the plants, the grass, sure to be killed from spills be required? I know you're not anticipating any spills, and I know, but they are concerned about that, cause it has happened, so can you answer that?
Of course. Well, we, we intend to be fully insured for, for all eventualities, including pollution and, and spill.
Okay. Why is the county, this, the county, I'm gonna save these, cause I think the county may have to answer these. Um, will there be gas monitors required around the complete well site?
We can install gas monitors.
Well, you know, sometimes if you go to a rig, there is gas. I know that our guys have to have masks and whatever you call them, and if there is any, but y'all aren't anticipating that.
That's for H2S.
That's right.
We don't have H2S here, but we could still have gas monitors, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
They're concerned about that.
There's no H2S concern here, though.
Yeah, there's no poison gas in this area.
There's no poison gas.
We will have what's called a mud logger on the well.
Mm-huh.
And they will actually monitor any shows and gas coming out of the well in terms of the drilling mud.
Yeah.
That would be the closest, the quickest form of, um, uh, alert for any gas coming out of the well. Then we can place some on the outside.
Okay, and if you had an alert and there was gas coming out of the well, what would you do?
Uh, you mud up a little more, put a little more heavy mud. The mud acts as a coolant, a lubricant, and it also keeps control of the well, so might have to mud up a little more.
Do you contact the neighbors?
Uh, we can't, if there's an emergency situation, everybody will be contacted.
And how are you gonna do that?
We'll probably, it'd be my plan to have everybody's phone number, cell number, and even email to notify everybody.
Okay. Um, they're saying no water discharge into the ditch system of any kind?
We should not have any, oh, you know, we should not have any spill, let's call it, from that location.
And you're gonna have tanks for all the stuff, the fluid?
Yes, it'll be a closed system, right.
Okay, yes. Okay, um, Texas Administrative Code Title sixteen, Part one, Rule three thirty-seven, states that no well shall be drilled nearer than four hundred and sixty-seven feet to any property line, lease line, or subdivision line. Considering that there are several property lines less than four hundred and sixty-seven feet from the middle of the park, what justifications do you plan on submitting to the Railroad Commission for an exemption to this rule?
Those are subsurface mineral lease.
Okay.
Designations. The bottom hole location will be four sixty-seven from any of the mineral lease, uh, boundaries. We will unitize this to be approximately a hundred and sixty acres. So we are not talking about surface boundaries, we're talking about subsurface mineral leases. So we'll pool all the mineral leases that we've acquired into a unit of a hundred and sixty acres. The boundary of that hundred and sixty acres will be the determining factor for the four sixty-seven. So the bottom hole location will be no closer than any of those.
Okay.
Locations, than the four sixty-seven, that is.
And while I'm thinking about this, when you guys leave after the fourteen days when you're drilling, what's gonna happen to that site? How's it gonna be secured so that no one can get in it and get hurt? I know that, I'm familiar, they do very good fencing. Is that what y'all are gonna do, and how high is it gonna be?
Certainly, and especially in a situation like this, we would put, uh, a strong hurricane fence, uh, around the perimeter of the production facility. Um, I, I can't tell you the, the height of the fence, but that's something that will, will be, you know, quite, um, uh, you know, conservative to, to do.
Well, the worry is if you have children, and they're inquisitive.
Of course, absolutely, cause that, that's the, with the safety of the children, it's a liability, exposure otherwise that we would have, and so by all means, that would be something that we, we need to, we need to safeguard.
And let's just say you get a well, that you, that you hit oil. What happens after that thing has dried up? What happens to the equipment that's on there? What do y'all do with that?
Well, that's removed. That's all removed.
All of it's removed.
Of course, absolutely. It will all, all be removed, and the surface will be restored to its prior condition.
I'm just trying to cover everything that they could possibly want to know. Okay, um, using the Google Earth, this is a little long here, I'm not sure if y'all can answer this, I wanna know who asked this question out there. Using the Google Earth measuring tool, there are eighteen properties within a five-hundred-foot radius of the center of the park. There are approximately forty-six properties within a thousand-foot radius of the center of the park. Using the U.S. Census figure of two-point-seven-two persons per household in Oasis County, this[1550.50] this amounts to approximately forty-nine and one-hundred-and-twenty-five people living in the five-hundred-one-thousand-foot radius areas respectively. A two thousand and eighteen study published by the Colorado School of Public Health in the journal Environment Science and Technology found that people living with a five-hundred, living within a five-hundred-foot radius of an oil and gas operation have an excess cancer risk, which is eight times the level accepted by the EPA. What actions do you plan to take to mitigate negative health effects of both the drilling process and subsequent mineral extraction? That was a long one, wasn't it? I think they're concerned about the risk of cancer if you're within a certain radius.
I guess my question would be, is what is causing these cancers?
Yeah, that's, uh...
Okay.
I would be interested to see the report that, that led to that. And I, I mean, we take extreme precautions to assure that there's no spillage, no gas leaks, uh, chemical, or, or any, any leaks of any kind. And I'm not sure what the report is angling on, if it's a, a function of general stress or, or something in the air, or what that might be.
And not to make this minimal, but I think everything we do now, we have a risk of cancer, unfortunately. But I can understand because it is so close, and this is in a park across the street from a residential area. So they're very concerned about this. You know, we live around plants out here as well, industrial plants, and we have a risk from that. So they're just, they're concerned. And I know that's a hard one for you guys to answer. You're not doctors.
Well, I, I can understand their concern.
I can, too.
You know, it's, as I said, it's a very nice neighborhood, and they, they, you know, take a lot of pride in it. And to that end, we want to keep that, our impact as minimal as possible, and we'll take whatever precautions are indicated or necessary to assure that.
And I do believe that. And we just want, the citizens want to be comfortable, they want to know everything that's going on, and that is our primary concern as a county, to make sure that they're safe and that there is no spillage or anything. Okay. If you guys will still stay here, I don't know if y'all can answer this or not, but it may be for you, Laura. What is the county going to change? Why, why is the county going to change the rules that they have enforced against the resident? Nobody permitted to cross ditches, no vehicles allowed in the park. Why is the county going to change the rules that they have enforced? Nobody is permitted to cross the ditches, and no vehicles are allowed in the park at this time. So I think what they're saying, why are we allowing them to come in and drill a well if these things can't be done? Like crossing the ditches, no vehicles allowed in the park, they're bringing trucks?
That's, I mean, that, that requires a policy decision by the court, not me.
Okay.
I certainly can provide the legal advice, and of course, as my clients, I will.
Okay. Will the county give an easement for power lines?
Again, that's another policy decision.
Another policy decision.
Yeah.
The county should require drilling storage tanks only, which they're saying that's what you're gonna do, no pits. So that's, that's a done deal because you're gonna use that other system that I talked about. Okay. And we, they ask about, will no flaring be enforced? Will no flaring be enforced? Is there flaring on oil rigs?
Um, well, in the Barnett, excuse me, in this Eagle Ford area, there are no gas pipelines nearby.
Okay.
So when you're driving from Corpus to San Antonio, you'll see flares going off everywhere. They, they've got more pipelines in, so you don't see as many. We will not be flaring. We have already located natural gas pipelines, cellar gas. Natural gas is a commodity, it's a sellable product, just like the oil. It's our plans to pipe it off-location to a gas marketer.
Okay. I think that's all of those questions. My last question to you would be, if the, the citizens have concerns, and as they do, and they weren't on answer today, and I hope that we're gonna have public comments so they can come up here and ask or say their concerns. Will there be a number with someone they can call and contact when they have concerns?
Yes, there'll be a number, and it most likely, I'm thinking of maybe even doing a Facebook page, everybody seems to use Facebook, right? So everybody can, the citizens or anybody can get online and see what's, see how, what's going on with the site and what's happening with operations.
Okay. Because communication's the key. They want to know what's going on.
Yeah.
As we all do. So I think that's the main concern. They want to know what's going on, when it's, before it happens.
Right. And with the technology today, that shouldn't be a problem.
Okay. That's all the questions that I have. Judge, are we gonna open it to public comment so that they can speak?
Sure. Public comment on item number five.
I wanna sit down and then we'll call you back up.
Thank you, gentlemen. Public comment on item number five. Anyone come up? Yes, sir. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is John Freeman. Uh, I usually come here for four H and all, but I'm here because I live in the subdivision. Uh, I'm glad to leave him the map up. I've been there thirty-one years in that subdivision. When I first moved there, that subdivision didn't flood. When six-twenty-four was widened, a deal was cut between Buddy Scaf and the Highway Department, and there used to be culverts on the road because that's three percent land on this side over here. This is three percent land. It, it's cropland, but it drains really fast. It's about a hundred and some acres in that, that drainage area. And that's what I do for a living, so that's why. And, excuse me, they came in and they took the culverts out and they put box culverts in. In the middle of the night, half of our neighborhood on the east side started flooding, and all. We came to Commissioner's Court, we worked it out, and they had to go in and box part of the culverts up. Again, the, the, the members of our neighborhood was upset because no one knew that was gonna happen. Why not say that? We're gonna put culverts in there, and we're gonna change the drainage, drainage area. They also decided to drain the area through, for, I mean, Quell Valley. Quell Valley had some very good lawyers that lived in there, and they blocked it. So in the meantime, the, the water should go straight ahead, uh, right at the edge of that little, that left dotted line. It should go straight ahead. That's, if you ever look on a Google map, on another Google map twenty years ago, that's the way the water went. The county couldn't get it to go because they didn't get Quell Valley's easements, so they turned it and came right down Lone Oak and turned it loose. They, the county spent about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars trying to enlarge culverts and all that, which is not, uh, really alleviated to solve the problem. That's kinda, we got pictures of it and all, but that whole area's floods. One of the concerns we have is, one of the big concerns is that, like you said, if it's, you start building up, what happens? When you build up, you're pushing the water somewhere else. You're, you're not pushing it. You, 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 you're solving your problem, but you're worsening our problem. So if you build up, if they build the pads up, because it gets wet, February's wet mud and all that, a lot of times for us and all, people who don't get water is gonna get water, you know? Most of the people out there's been out there for a long time. Their trees, you know, we talk about what are we gonna give back to them and, you know, for their damages. Most of us are too old to get damages. We want our trees, we wanna retire out there, and all. So it's not a monetary deal. It's a deal of, that's the life that we want to live. The second thing is, there's three baseball teams that, that practice out there in that, in that park. They're out there yesterday practicing, all. There was a plan put in by the county, we have a copy of it, that there was gonna help, enhance the park for, because we was trying to draw younger families into the park and all. And, uh, but now when you put an oil well right in the middle of it, who wants it? It, it's just gonna be a waste. The kids can't play baseball, they can't practice baseball. Most of the lots nowadays, where people used to let you practice due to liabilities, they wanted you, they wanted you to practice on their lots. So we get all the kids out from Corpus, even though we're not in the city limits, we get the kids out from Corpus, coming out to this area to practice and play and have a good time. And, uh, but now that, you know, you've done this, it's, 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 it's gonna go. The last thing that I wanna say, and there's two other people gonna speak, you know, that kinda hoarse, I apologize, I've kinda got allergies. The, the, the other thing that, that we're concerned about is, why weren't we notified about this prior? Now, we know Commissioner has done a great job, she, we met, when we found out about it, she met with us the next night, and we had forty-two families attended the meeting and all that. But it just seems like this deal's been going on for a while, and kinda like the six-twenty-four improvement, why didn't we know about it as, until we got a phone call from, I think Gerald, that works for you all, gave us a phone call, very, very nice man, we have no problems with that. And he notified us that, that they were trying to drill in the park. And, and that's one of the concerns that the citizens have and all. And I, I'll let Dawn and Brett finish up. Thank you. And Judge, before I leave, uh, it's, I, I appreciate the time that you've spent here. I've worked with you on a lot of different projects. This is probably my last time in Commissioner's Court. You've been very, a very good county judge, and I appreciate what you've done in the past.
Thank you for the comments.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you so much.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Dawn Dorsey Smart. I live right across from where it looks like they're going to end their well or their directional drilling. My family has owned land down six-twenty-four, and about a hundred years ago, one of the major blowouts in Nuasis County happened right down the road, and there's still a major crater and bodies at the bottom of it. So blowouts do happen, it is dangerous. We appreciate, and I appreciate you allowing us to be here and requesting the Wilcox Oil Company members to be here. The Lone Oak Park, or Cal Island Acre Park, is six-point-six-one-four acres that the county is responsible for, and is a major drain area to the Nuasis River, our drinking water. What type and how much of liability insurance is the county requiring Wilcox Oil and the other operating companies that will be held responsible for gross negligence through punitive damages if, if damages and environmental and quality of life situations occur? Please enter into record that this is an official notice that we will take legal action if the environment of, and quality of life of our home, I always speak for myself, is, is endangered. On September fourteenth, just last week, we had two inches of rain, and I know you have little copies of this, but I would like these documents to be put into record to show the drainage problems around the, around, right from that park, draining into our homes or outside our homes, and what could be a liability. Actually, my home is right across where they plan to directionally go down, where to make that well finalize. So I'm not a happy camper about that. Have you all seen an audited financial statement of these companies that you're allowing to come into public area to drill a well? We know the city only owns two-point-four acres of it, and they're gonna have to probably cross into the city bounty line to get to the oil well. Off of six-twenty-four, you have about ten houses that will back up to where they're planning on drilling. Ten houses, ten families. And yes, there have been a lot of oil wells drilled. We've had a blowout. We also, right across six-twenty-four is a farmland where they have the oil and gas wells that are, that have been drilled, but no one lives there. Now, of course, all the stuff from that farmland and the oil and, oil wells do drain right down through the park, come right across six-twenty-four and drain down through the park. So, and they have done pipelines under six-twenty-four from there. I think they could probably work with the people over on that area to drill a well. So my, my, I urge you all, please, to really make every effort and not to assume that everything's gonna be great, because it's been my experience as a mineral owner and where I have production, that oil companies sometimes go, leave everything. They don't have enough money to really operate oil wells properly, and that just, it messes up the land. And but where I've experienced that, though, it's just, there's no, there's no, there aren't residents, there aren't fifty families living right around it. So please, I'm very much requesting that the Commissioner's Court look into this more. I know I, my family is looking into it with a retired judge, as well as other lawyers, and we're, we're willing to have a really good fight over this.
Good morning. My name's Brent Clayton. I live on Colony Drive. Thanks to y'all for letting me speak today.
Sure.
My wife and I moved to this neighborhood about five years ago. Before that, we lived in the Anaville area, right near Leopard and Violet, and my wife had terrible breathing issues, and we just could not figure out what the problem was. And it seemed to always be when the wind came out of the southeast from the direction of the refinery in between Violet and McKenzie. We didn't really think much of it, maybe just a coincidence, but when, once we moved to outside of city limits, a little bit farther from all the oil and gas operations, the problems went away. So we're really thankful for that. And we are concerned about the health issues that this oil and gas operation may present. We now have a two-year-old. He's very inquisitive, loves to run. We've been out in that park a few times. Even though it's just a couple of backstops, it's a good area for him to run around and find baseballs that were forgotten. And we have another baby on the way next month. So like I said, we're very concerned about the, the health issues. Also, it will be in a park, which is, we, we believe should be reserved for public benefit. And so it's just hard to wrap my head around the fact that a company can go into a public park and do this type of operation. I have a couple of questions that either Commissioners can answer or the company themselves. I called the Railroad Commission a couple of weeks ago and asked about what are some possible things that we could do as a neighborhood? And I was told that there are some counties in the state that require a certain distance of an oil and gas well from, say, schools. Now, there is a, the Baptist Church on six-twenty-four is within a thousand feet of this proposed area, and they, now they have a private academy, a private school with kids, so they'll be within that one-thousand-foot range of this operation. And I don't think anyone's mentioned that they, yet. I don't know if the church has been notified or any representatives are here, but that's definitely something to be concerned of. Can you, as a county, put in measures to require a certain distance from schools? Is it too late for that now that they're already in their process? I just think that that's something that seems like a common sense legislation. Mr. Pusley, the other night, said that the county goes by the state laws, and y'all can't create laws like a, like a municipality could, but I'd just like to know what the explanation on that is. What else? Also, the, a question earlier that was asked to the companies about the permit, I'd like to know, the answer that they gave was just when they proposed on starting the drilling in February of two thousand and nineteen, but I'd like to know when they plan on submitting the permit to the Railroad Commission so that we could possibly make a protest or a formal plea against, against this proposal to the Railroad Commission. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Could we follow up on those questions, some of the questions? If y'all can come back. The last one that he asked, when are y'all submitting the permit to the Railroad Commission?
It is a process that one must go through to get the, the letter from the Water Board that designates the freshwater area, zones that must be protected. Sometimes there's a delay on getting that, or that, that processed. The permit will likely be filed within the next ninety days.
Within the next ninety days. Can you let us know when that is done?
Certainly.
Um, before you leave today, I would appreciate if y'all leave your contact information. That would be very helpful. And I guess the court would have to look into the other about the, and did you write that down? That we'll look into that? Someone asked me this, what happens with the gas well? And I know that you're saying you're gonna drill for oil, but that could change. But if you, if with the gas well, if they use condensate tanks, will they use trucks to remove the fluid in the tanks?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. That's a big question they wanted to know.
Liquids would have to be, and that, those are, those are things that are all monitored. There's a lot of remote sensing technology available to contain, you know, fluids or, or gases and, and alert people if there's anything that's, that shouldn't be there.
Okay. I just wanna tell y'all, I don't assume everything's gonna be great. There are accidents on rig sites all the time. There are accidents on plants, any of the plants we've got in the city, all the time. So I think that every precaution should be made to prepare and be proactive, and I think that's what y'all are trying to do. I do believe that. But the citizens have to know that that's what you're doing, and that's, that's the main concern here. I would like to say that the reason you weren't notified sooner was as soon as I got a phone call from the landman, I immediately went to Judge Neal, and he told me to go to legal. It took a little while to get the legal opinion. My first reaction was, can we stop them? What can we do to stop them, to doing that in a park? Well, found out we couldn't stop. So by the time we got all of this done, you guys were getting letters, basically, and we weren't notified that they were going out. So I would just ask y'all that, you know, I don't know what's gonna happen with this. I think you've got a lot of citizens that are not pleased, and they may go legally and do something. But I would just ask that y'all contact the court. I think that was one of the things that the lawyer put in there, that we contact the court, they're contacted when the things are done. And, and I appreciate very much that y'all came. It's hard to come to situations like this when you know that people are not happy, and they're concerned about their welfare, the welfare of their children, their community, and that park, and I, I totally understand that. So Judge, I don't know where we go from here. One of the questions they also ask, how much is the county requiring for punitive damages? Is that a question that we can answer?
No.
Not now?
No.
Okay. Can, can you explain to them why you can't answer that question?
Basically, that, I mean, that's gonna require a legal advice from me to my clients. You are my client, so I will provide that.
And the other thing they said, are we allowed to see an audit statement? I guess to make sure that you guys are legit and that you have money. And Laura, that's your question, too, isn't it? Because I would think we could not do that.
The audit? I mean, we don't have an agreement with, with regards to an audit or anything like that, unless it's voluntary, but, I mean, it's something that I suppose, that, that entails like a policy decision from you guys, and I'll, I'll give you some advice with regards to that.
Okay. So I guess we leave today with this, that there's some policy issues that we're going to look at, and when we find out what the answers to those, we're gonna let the residents know what those are. Do y'all wanna say anything?
Point out, in, in answering the gentleman who mentioned the, the issue of flooding in the park, this is one thing that we're not fully tuned into, and it's good to know about that. And that's something that definitely needs to be examined, because if you, if you stop the water from flooding one place, you're just pushing it somewhere else, and that may cause yet another problem. And, and that would not be acceptable. So, so we, and I cannot tell you the solution for that, we need to evaluate everything going on, where, where there are culverts, where the water flows, where it runs, and see what we can do to, to not get in the way, but to actually help that drainage situation.
And y'all, because that was a good point he made, because when you build up, it's gonna go somewhere.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
So, y'all are going to look at that.
Oh, that's, that's part of, part of our ongoing evaluation. And, and we're looking at other things. The, the lady who's mentioned a, a remote location, south of 624 is not, is not physically feasible for what we're trying to do. But, but it may be that there are other locations, and so we're, we're looking at other options also.
We are looking at other options.
So, y'all are going to let us know what all your options are, what you're going to do, how this is going to be done?
Of course.
And they're going to be fully informed?
Yes.
Does every, anybody have something else for me to answer before we get done with this?
I would like to say one more thing. We are not planning on drilling on this park just for the fun of it. We have mineral rights, we have mineral leases beneath that park.
Yes.
We have a right to be there.
Yes.
Like y'all have the surface rights? We have the mineral rights. This is a mineral state. In the state of Texas, mineral estate is dominant over the surface. We have to use the surface to get to it.
Yeah.
We'll limit as much as we can affect on the community, but we have a right to be there.
And we are very well aware that you have that right.
And we aren't putting that, putting that middle of that park to hurt anybody, to scare anybody's kids, or anything like that. That place right there gives us the best spot to reduce, and the most distance from any of the houses.
If you don't have a right to trespass, you can look down.
We're not, we, we own the, we have a right to go on that property.
The mineral state dominates.
Address the Court, please.
So, anyway, I just want to point that out. We aren't doing this just for the fun of it.
Thank you.
And one other point.
Yeah.
We're not going to be using the entire park. I mean, the park is approximately 10 acres. Our drill site will be between an acre and an acre and a half. If we establish production, we're probably looking at using less than a half acre of that park.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you so much.
Take a deep breath. Thank you. And thanks for the public being here as well. We understand the concerns, and we appreciate your being here. Anything else, Commissioner?
No, thank y'all so much for coming.
Thank you very much.
All of you.
All right. Commissioners, we have a, we have a concern here today that has come up Thursday after last Wednesday's meeting. I got a call from the Johnson Controls people, and, and they were talking to us about talking to me and Kristen and maybe Dale, about the condition of our chillers. Well, we are living through, we are living through what that condition this morning. One of our chillers went out today. It's getting cooler, so it's at least back up. These chillers are old. They're very old. They've been put back together several times with chewing gum and baling wire and everything else. And, and I guess today was the sign of the times. We come to work today, and one of them's broken. We're going to receive a presentation today from several people. I'm, I'm going to ask the Court just to sort of sit back and listen for a little bit, because there probably are a number of possible solutions to this, some of which are very expensive, and some which Juan and some of our other people have to bring to us that may not be as expensive. But I think today was an example. We're sitting here on the 19th of September, and it started to get hot in here. You can imagine what it would be like in this courthouse in July or in August if we really start to lose those chillers and they go down. Now, this is not anything this Court has done or not done. We've been working with Johnson Controls for years to try to keep these things working. We have a contract with them to help perform the maintenance and all. So, I, I'm going to ask you all, before you start pinging everybody, let's listen to all the options, and then we'll be able to ask the questions. So, who's going to be up first? Johnson Controls. All right. Thank you.
We have a handout we're going to pass out.
You're welcome.
While we're doing that, let me introduce myself. I'm Mike Bailey with Johnson Controls. I'm a County Exec with Johnson Controls. The young man passing out the, the handouts is Rusty McClellan. He is our Area Sales Manager and is an engineer by trade. Also with me today is Bill Coe. He is the Performance Assurance Engineer that is assigned to this account, and he works closely with Public Works. And he monitors all the, the performance contract savings and calculations there, and provides a quarterly report to Public Works, as well as an annual report. And so, he is here today as well. So, as we kind of jump into this, again, as we look at this today, we're going to talk a little bit about our relationship, just briefly. And then we're going to really jump into what is the meat of the, the matter, and that is our assessment based upon the information that we have at this point of the current condition of these chillers. We're going to provide some budgetary input as to possible budgetary considerations for the county. And we're also going to look at, you know, some things as far as timeline and next steps and that sort of thing. So, that is our plan today. Obviously, we have been involved with the, the Court now for seven years. We, we did our first performance contract seven years ago. In 2000, started that process in 2010. Ultimately, the contract was approved in 2011. And, and then a second contract was approved in 2015. We've, since then, a year, we're in the second year of a performance service agreement that basically provides inspection and maintenance on, preventative maintenance on many pieces of your equipment that are located throughout the courthouse and the jail. So, that is kind of our relationship. So, as we jump into this today, basically what you have is you have, the courthouse being served by two 850-tonne chillers. You know, the age of those chillers is 18 years and 16 years respectively. And so, when you look at this type of technology, and these being, and we'll get more into this, but, but when you look at these type of technologies, you know, you start seeing what you're seeing. At, at the end of 15 years, the life, you're, you're, you're starting to exceed the life expectancy of this equipment. And so, that, that is the results that you're seeing, is you're starting to have failures, you're starting to have issues. And so, in, in doing this, you know, we looked at the system overall. And, and we, we do that because as you go through this process, I mean, there's, you know, it's where you draw the line in the sand as far as what you're going to do as a solution. Because you have the chiller plant, which is kind of, as you will, the motor of the system that drives the, the cooling out. Then you have the air side, and the air side is what's in this room, and that's what delivers the, the comfort within the, the room. And so, you have chilled water lines that are taking the chilled water from the, the chiller system, running throughout this building. You have air handling units that are located on the roof and in different areas within this facility that provide the air. And then you have what's called VAV boxes, which actually control what comes into your particular office or courtroom or whatever that actually provides the comfort within that. So, all of that is on the air side. And so, we kind of want you to understand, you know, that differentiation. You know, as we entered into this assessment, you know, we sat down and interviewed Public Works. We sat down with, with Mr. Pimentel and, and with DePock, and, and got gathered their thoughts and their concerns and their issues that they were seeing. As you know, you know, DePock is the one who operates the system on a, on a daily basis. And so, we wanted to gain his insight. We also interviewed our branch technicians who have been involved in the preventative maintenance program that we, we're in the middle of year two on. And so, we wanted to get their information as well. And we also looked at this in a sense of, okay, what, how do we come back with a turnkey solution for you? Because again, at the end of the day, you know, there needs to be some type of turnkey solution. So, again, as we say, both chillers right now are at the end, reaching the end of their useful life. You know, this was a concern that is expressed by staff and, and kind of set up the situation where you are today. So, you have two chillers, as I said. Chiller one is 18 years old. Chiller one has been the more dependable chiller, and so it has run the preponderance of the time. So, and chiller two, although younger, has had an ongoing history of being down, non-operable. What typically happens is in this type of situation, there are refrigerant leaks. When they're, the pressure on the refrigerant goes low, that chiller becomes, begins to what's called surge. And when that chiller starts to surge, to protect itself, it will actually shut down. And so, right, you know, chiller two has been down. As a matter of fact, we are actually down there right now, working on chiller two. Might note, you know, we have not really been providing the ongoing actual repairs to the chillers. Another vendor has been doing that. This is so, this, this is our first time really to, to touch the chillers. And so, we are in, down there repairing chiller two. And so, here's kind of what we found on chiller two as we were working on that to get it back up and operational, is that, you know, it has a, a large amount of leaks. It, you know, the, the, there's gaskets, the gaskets have become aged, they're leaking, the, the tubes within the chiller or, or have leaks within those that has to be repaired. And so, it's a, it's an ongoing battle because of the age of those. And so, what we've done is, you know, we, we assessed the, the chiller two situation. We found that there was a part that was, needed to be replaced, and that, because of the leak that it was causing, we had to replace that part before we could even assess what other leaks were in place. And so, we've been working on that chiller to bring it up to, to speed. And, and I'll give a little more information on that here in just a second. But when you look at this, both units, just over the last years, has continually had one or the other down and out of operation. And when that happens on an increasing regularity, what you have is a lack of redundancy. You know, that this system is designed as a redundant system. And what that means is, at any point, you know, the 850 tons is, is designed to be sufficient to provide the cooling necessary for this facility. So, one chiller is set up to be able to provide enough cooling to service this building. And so, by having two chillers, you have redundancy, which means that if one chiller goes down, you can bring that other chiller up, and you can still maintain the comfort level within this building. So, it takes the risk of a catastrophic failure off of the county. You know, and that's, that's really what the concern that is, is being expressed here is, you know, what happens? And like we did this morning, if there's a, both chillers are down, and we can't get those back up. You know, these chillers are, utilize a low-pressure refrigerant. Again, that style chiller, you know, it's just, has an age limit of, you know, like I say, 15 years. What you're seeing is common within the marketplace, that they do have a, a lot of leaks. You know, the unit that we're working on, each of these units contains about 1,800 pounds of refrigerant. And so, when they have a leak, that has to be purged, and then you have to obviously provide the recharge of any refrigerant that's lost. The, the chiller one, chiller two that we're working on right now, our original estimate was that it was about 500 pounds low, and we charged about $22 a pound for the refrigerant, which is discounted because of the PSA. And so, we were looking at a cost of about $11,000. Well, as we've gotten into it and more, it's, there's another 200 pounds that is lost, that, so you're adding another $4,400 to that. And that's just for the refrigerant. That doesn't count the parts and the labor and everything associated with getting this, the chillers, this chiller back up and operational. You know, leaks have to be reported. We're, we're required by law to report those leaks to EPA, so that has to be reported. And I think the, the biggest issue is, you know, especially, we'll speak to the last two years where we've been involved with the PSA, and we have history prior to that. But, but again, you have had a, a very infrequent situation where both chillers were available for operation. One or the other has consistently been down. There's only been a few months within that 24-month period when both chillers were actually operational. And again, this lack of dependency, dependability and, and redundancy is really creating the risk that we have. So, the other part about this is when you look at the chilling, the cooling system, one of the major components is the cooling tower. The cooling tower is what takes the, the water, return water, it runs through fans, and that dissipates heat. And it's required, you need that heat dissipated in that cooling tower to allow it to come back to the chiller at a temperature that that chiller then can efficiently and effectively reduce that temperature down to provide the comfort within the, the facility. Unfortunately, the, the cooling tower is really in bad shape in a lot of ways. It has a, a wooden basin that, that has become brittle, that has become deteriorated. So, you know, when you look at, as we talk about solutions, we're going to really focus on, you know, immediate needs of being the chillers and the cooling tower. I've got a few pictures, and I'll just run through these real quick, just to give you a feel of what the, the, the facility looks like down there. It's in the basement. There are two chillers, as I say. You can see just from there kind of what that, what that looks like down there, just to give you a taste. That picture there, you see, you know, how you've had some oil leaks and, and that sort of thing. And, and that's kind of what you're seeing, is you have either refrigerant leaks or oil leaks that are causing, you know, these chillers to shut down and have to be repaired. So, that's kind of where we are when we look at the assessment of, of the two chillers. I mean, you really have an issue now where the chillers are at the end of their life. They're, they're, they're not being dependable. It's hard to have, you don't have the redundancy you need. You, you are constantly having to expend M and O dollars for repairs, which they are expensive. And so, you know, you, you have the possibility of a catastrophic failure. Now, if you were to lose both chillers, obviously, and we've, we've looked at this, the, and they couldn't be repaired in a, in a timely manner, so you had a catastrophic failure of both. The solution would be to bring in temporary chillers. And so, when you look at a temporary chillers, you know, typically a trailer-mounted temporary chiller is around 400 to 450 tons. So, you'd have to bring in two trailer-mounted temporary chillers to service this facility. To do that, you're probably looking at a minimum of a week timeline to get those in place and connected and up and operational. And that's, you know, you, because you've got, obviously, you've got to find the availability of two chillers. You've got to bring those on-site. I understand that there is ability, there are connections to bring in the chilled water. There's not an electrical connection, but we can do an, what's called an umbilical card, you know, big cable run into the chiller plant to grab power to, to, to provide that. But you have the potential of, of a week lost if you had a major failure of both chillers. And so, that's something we want to be, make you aware of. The other part about that, for two chillers like, or two temporary chillers like that, you're probably looking at a cost of about $40,000 to $50,000 a month to, to provide those two temporary chillers. And so, you have that in addition to all the other, the emergency repairs and everything that would be associated, the, the increased costs associated with emergency repairs. You'd also have the chiller rental cost on top of that for the, whatever duration they were in place. Are there questions? I've kind of thrown a lot of information out there before we kind of talk about solutions.
Go ahead.
All right. So, again, when you look at a solution, it's kind, as I say, it's kind of where you draw the line in the sand. You know, you can look at, you know, you, as I said, you can, we have, we know we have issues with the chillers. We know we have issues with the, the cooling tower. And we know that, and, and, you know, the proper remedy to provide the, the dependability and the redundancy is to address those items. In addition to that, as we get into the design, you know, we got to make sure that the piping system within the courthouse is sufficient to support it, and that there's no issues there that are limiting the ability to provide the chill water within the facility to keep, maintain the comfort. You know, we got to make sure the pumps are sized right. We got to make sure that, you know, the controls and the, and the variable drives and everything that goes within that plant is properly, works properly with the, the solution. And that's part of a detailed engineering design, is to do all that, is to actually enter into that detailed engineering design to come up with all those things and analyze all those things. But then you go back, and as, as you recall, I talked about the air side. And so, you know, we know that on the air side, you have some air handling units that are original to this building. You have, you know, things within this building that, that really, realistically, do need to be addressed as, as well. And, and of course, as you do that, as you continue to expand and move to a more whole, what we call a holistic solution, where you're saying, I want this whole plant and facility to operate correctly, and so I want to, you know, change out the engine and the, and the cooling tower, and I want to change out, you know, all the air side so that we have the right holistic solution, the cost goes up. And so, with any public entity, we know there's two things that you have to look at. Obviously, you have to look that you want to make sure you're making the right decision for what the solution should be. You want, you want the right solution. You want to spend the dollars right. But obviously, you, as, as a public entity, you also have limits on what you have available to fund, you know, improvements in, in, in going forward. And so, as we kind of looked at that, and you look at that potential solution and, and have had discussions with Public Works, you know, they have ballparked a, a budget of that of about $10 million. And, and that takes, because they're looking at, you know, what if, you know, the issues of, you know, what if we have to upsize piping, you know, and all these other things that I looked at as a potential solution. You know, if we go ahead and change out, you know, some of the air handlers and, and some of that. So, that's going to drive the budget up. So, we took a step back, and again, we came back and kind of looked, okay, what is the, the primary focus initially? And, and that is obviously, as we said, the chillers replacement, the two chillers that that are at the end of their age. They're, they're, you know, they could fail at any time. I can't tell you it's today, it's a year from now, you know, how, how long will they live? But, you know, that's, that's on the table, obviously. Cooling tower replacement, that has to be, if you, it would make little or no sense to replace the chillers without the cooling tower. Just, they, they have to operate in lockstep, and so you would have to create, keep that in. You know, obviously, you know, the pumping and, and, and all the things that are associated to support the delivery of the chilled water within that plant would need to be addressed. And so, we put together a budget figure for that. And I'm going to tell you, this is a very conservative budget figure, because we haven't done these detailed design. You know, we came up with a figure of about $6 million. In honesty, I think obviously this work could be done at, at less than the $6 million, but you know, the last thing we want to do is come before the court and say, oh, you can do it for, you know, five million and it ends up being seven. So, you know, we've been conservative in our estimate, but, but as a point of check, you know, there are different levels of solution that can be brought to address the, the, this. And that's what we do as part of this process is to work with you, you and staff collaboratively to design the solution that meets your goals for making sure you have the right solution and understand what that solution delivers and then also the finances and what that cost is. You know, we'll work with, with you, you know, if there's financing needs to be done, we provide help, uh, identify financing in the past for our performance contracts. We use, uh, lease purchase financing for that and have been able to find some very competitive interest rates. So obviously we'll be glad to do that. We don't make money off the financing, so it's just a service we provide. You know, obviously, you know, it's, we, we think we're very good at delivery. Uh, if we were to be chosen to work with you in this matter, uh, and, you know, we, our process, there's no change orders, which I think is a very important issue, is that you're not going to have any change orders. Uh, and I'm just going to run through these real quick. This is, you know, we just delivered a solution at the, the school district. And this just gives you a flair that what we did, a holistic solution with them, we redid their chiller plants. And so the next few pages you can flip through and you just see kind of the before and afters there of, of what, what happened there. So real quickly, kind of shifting gears now, let's talk about a timeline. So obviously the, the, the first thing is, is that there has to be detailed engineering design. You know, you, that, that's going to have to happen. There, there's got to be, there's going to have to be detailed engineering design done to determine that the current chiller situation, the current chillers are sized properly, the piping size, all the issues that go within that plant, we need to, you know, engineering, our engineers need to look at it and, and ensure that. So to be able to do that, for us to do that, you would have to approve what we call a, a contract to allow us to begin, uh, that design process, a project development agreement. And we'll talk a little bit more detail about that here in just a second. The next thing obviously is to do that design. Realistically, this is a complex design and, and, you know, so we have, uh, looked at this and said, you know, we need at least 120 days to do this design to ensure that we, you know, have the right design. And throughout that design process, it is, as I said before, this is obviously a collaborative effort. You know, we're going to be meeting with your public work staff and staff to, you know, share that with them, you know, what our design is, the issues that we're finding, potential solutions that we can bring back. And so throughout that whole process, it goes to be numerous meetings throughout that. We also would develop an implementation plan. So if that happened, then obviously there's going to have to be, whichever direction you go, there's going to be court action to approve a contract, you know, to move forward with the, the turnkey installation. And so that would require a court meeting. For this type of equipment, you're going to be looking at a probably, at least a 16 week lead time. You know, these aren't on the shelf, uh, and so they have to be manufactured and queued and manufacturing. And so we're, we're seeing a 16 week lead time to be able to have the equipment on, on, on site. Again, if we were selected, the process that we would enter into is as soon as that contract was approved, we would begin mobilization. And that mobilization, what that would entail would be that we would immediately bring in temporary chillers, get those in place and established and set up so that, you know, the risk of failure is taken off and moved to the temporary chillers. Additionally, during that 16 week, uh, wait period, we would begin demolition. And so, you know, this process is a quick way to move to, uh, to, to mobilize, perform the, start performing work to try and minimize the total time and total exposure that, you know, the two chillers are, that are being replaced. Construction period, uh, again, uh, is based upon the final scope and, you know, how far that goes is about nine to 12 weeks. Nine to 12 months, sorry. Yes, months, not weeks. Sorry about that, guys. Thank you. So next steps. Obviously, you know, for us, the next step would be if you wanted to, us to move forward, it would be to execute the contract for detailed design. Uh, for phase two, we did use the allied states procurement. Uh, it meets all of the legal requirements for procurement for a performance contract in this, which this would be. Uh, and, and so, and we are approved and it does meet all the requirements of section 302 of the Texas, uh, local government code. And so, you know, if you did that, then obviously execute that agreement, we would immediately begin the detailed design and, and moving forward. So I know that's a lot of information, guys. I've got, these guys are the technical side of this, so that's why they're standing here ready to answer any technical questions, uh, or any questions that you may have. So.
Judge, I just, I want to say on this project, you know, when I was at the school district, we, um, we took the, we followed the lead of the county with Johnson Controls.
Right.
All of the ones that took the initiative with, with energy savings that really got our attention and not only took us into energy savings, but also into the chillers. And, uh, you know, these are the pictures that I remember seeing as they were going in phases to improve, uh, the three high schools that they featured. Two of those are, are in precinct three. And, uh, you know, it, it was a, it was a well worth project that the school district invested in. Uh, all I ask Mike is that you just turn back the AC back on. I know you turned off the switch or something before you came.
You know, I've already been accused.
Sell us on this, so.
I, I've already had that accusation. I, I promise you, we did not do that.
It's good to see you, Mike. Thanks.
I want to thank you all for just a moment. Why don't you sit down in just a second. Juan, would you care to make a report to the court, please?
I have one question. Hold on.
Yeah.
Uh, you talk about $6 million and you didn't talk about design. Does that include into?
Yes, sir.
So in the temporary, uh, pay for instance, the temporary chiller, that would be almost $54,000 a year. That's also included into the?
Yes, sir. So, so, and I, I actually, I'm glad you asked that question because I kind of skipped over that as part of the presentation. In our presentation, we've looked at what would be our design cost that would be included there and we've, you know, again, it's kind of based upon scope, but we're saying a range of 150,000 to 225,000 for us to do the design. And so that would be rolled into that $6 million figure that we, again, is a very conservative figure. The, all the temporary chillers, you know, at the cost of 40,000 to 50,000 dollars a month, you know, we, we have covered that in that estimate as well. So what we're proposing again is a turnkey solution where we come in, we, we, we take all the design, we develop the detailed scopes necessary to take those to subcontractors, we walk the subcontractors, we receive their pricing back, we get a minimum of three bids for every, uh, uh, trade. And, and so that we're looking for the best pricing to bring back to the county. And then we put that all together, as I said, and then sit down with staff and yourselves to, to say, okay, these are different options and different solutions that you can look at and, and structure the final project based upon y'all's input.
This could be anywhere from five million to six million.
Uh, yes, sir. Yeah. For the minimum project are up to 10 million if, you know, depending on where you went on the airside or.
Is there anything that we can do to relieve some of the, some of the pricing, like some of the things that maybe your public works, as far as the design, can we, can we, you know, can we go out and do the design or get somebody else does the design or?
We're going to hear from Juan.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll let him answer that. I don't want to speak for him.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I would not do that.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, gentlemen. Don't go far.
Uh, Judge Commissioners, good morning. How are you doing? Judge Commissioners, based on the report, I just saw the report or the presentation this morning in my office. And, um, you know, we do concur that the chillers are in their last, last years of their life expectancy. Based on the ASHRAY, which is American Society of Heating and Air Conditioning of Engineering, typically, uh, the chillers can, the life expectancy is about 15 to 20 years. So based on these chillers, they're ranged from 10 to 15 years. So yes, they are in their, in their, um, within their last of their, of their run. We do concur. Uh, we do feel that the chillers need to be replaced, uh, based on the billings that come in on a, sometimes on a daily basis and sometimes on a, on, you know, throughout the whole month of having to repair and do some stuff, upgrades on, on having to, to take care of the chillers, uh, it is a high cost. Uh, I did look at the cost for a year of having to replace, to do repairs to the chillers or having to come out and look at the chillers because we haven't been having issues. Uh, we've been spending anywhere from 100 to 200,000 a year on that. Um, you know, and that, so that is a, a major thing. We do feel that the chillers didn't even get replaced. However, we also like to look at other options and maybe either rehabbing the existing chillers and also either contacting, you know, kind of like Commissioner said, either looking at it from our end on the engineering side and see what alternatives we can do in order to save some monies. Um, and that's going to be an option that we would have to come back to Commissioner's Court for, for approval.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Juan?
No, sir.
I think, I think there's general agreement that we have a, a serious problem with age and condition. Now, we have a more serious problem with how you pay for this. We just finished the budget and, and if you will recall, there's only a million dollars in the contingency fee. So if we were to say, well, let's just use the million dollars and we're out of money for a whole year. We have, we, at the time we got the word, uh, the last Thursday, I guess, we also had a conference call with Noe, our bond counsel. And Dale and Kristen and I were on the phone for quite a while talking about this. The reason why we wanted to talk to Noe is, all of you know, we just got some substantial re, uh, downgrading and all from the rating agencies on our bond capacity, on our ability to sell bonds. We were concerned and still are concerned about how this affects our ability to do something about entering into any more debt. Now, anything we do to replace or repair these chillers is debt because we're either going to have to borrow the money. Uh, there are other options. Kristen, you want to talk to the court just a little bit about some of the options we've looked at? And then I want to continue this discussion because, uh, the ability to pay for this is going to be a key issue for the court in the future as well as where we are right now. So Kristen, if you would, please.
Okay. Um, you know, obviously it will depend on, on the size of the project and how much, you know, the court wants to take on if it ends up being a full replacement or a repair or whatever, that, you know, that will, um, that will influence how, how we go about paying for it. A couple of the options would, um, like, um, Judge said when we talked to Noe, um, would be taking out another certificate of, of obligation. And so that would be another issuance, um, we would have to go through. Um, and so there, there is a possibility that if, if we did want to go that route, um, we would be able to do that right away. But what would happen is, um, we would basically do, um, we would have to, to write a resolution to say that, um, we're going to use fund balance to go ahead and pay for it, but then we're going to reimburse ourselves, uh, when the certificate of obligation is actually issued. So that would be one option. Um, and because it would be probably at the beginning of the fiscal year, um, we would still have plenty of opportunity obviously to, to reimburse ourselves. Um, another option, we haven't, we haven't had a phone call yet, but.
How much is your certificate?
It depends on how much you issue. So it depends on how much the total project's going to cost and how much you're going to issue. And then another possible option is to, um, ta, take out a loan through the state. Sometimes the state has, um, a, a program that we've used in the past, the SECO program where they have a low interest rate. So that could be another option that we could explore. Um, I know that they're going to be taking applications for that, um, after the, the start of the fiscal year. So we would have to contact them if that's something that the court is interested in. Um, and then obviously your other alternative, if we do go with more of a repair instead of a replacement, depending on the value, we might be able to go ahead and fund that through, um, find, find some funds, um, in our existing certificate of obligations that we have, um, depending on the amount and be able to, to, to pay for it that way. So it really just depends on the size of the project.
Part of what Johnson Controls has suggested to us is there might be some way to do a long-term financing agreement with them where they roll that into the cost. And I'm not going to speak for you guys, but you said that cost is five or 6% if I remember that correctly. Noe and I had, and the three of us had a long discussion about where we think we're going and how, how quickly we could or might want to act. He thinks unofficially, he thinks that we might be able to finance these certificates of deposits even with where we are with Moody's and Standard and Poor's. It's somewhere between four and a half and 5%. I think the current bonds that we're selling are four point something.
Right. I think the total interest cost was about 4.27.
4.27. Now, he said it'd be a little bit more, um, because of the, what, because of the sliding, whatever he called it. But anyway, it'd be less than 5%. And so if, if I were going to suggest something to the court, I would suggest we go, get our own financing and pay for it. That way that would be setting it up through the regular debt schedule and we would have to have a lot of work to be done about how we're going to pay that back and how it would affect the debt schedule and everything else. So, so Commissioners, I'm not in a position this morning, nor are we in a position this morning to make any firm recommendation to any of us. What we would like to do is get Noe down here immediately in, in October, the first meeting in October and let him walk through all of these things with the court. Because the decision is going to be made by this court that we have to do something with these chillers and we're probably well down the road about this with Johnson Controls. Juan has looked at some of this and he has some work to do about, you know, how far down the road do we go? Can we put a few more bandages on this thing or anything else?
Judge, do we have any money left over from any CIPs that have been?
No.
Nothing.
Nothing. We, we have no funds available. So, and, and I'm not cutting you off, Commissioner, we, we don't have any money. Okay? It's, it's all obligated or spent. There may be a few hundred thousand dollars that we could scrape together and I'm talking about a very, very few, but this is a major, major project for this courthouse. And if it's 6 million or 7 million or 8 million to get it all done, whatever that is, I don't think there's any question we're going to have to get this done. The question before myself and my financial advisors here locally is, what is the best way to try to pay for this and how can we do this in the best interest of the taxpayers and the county and get this thing started within a reasonable time? So my suggestion is, let's get our bond counsel down here and let him explain in detail to the court where he thinks we are and with the financial options, because he has a lot of connections with the state. He does a lot of things where the Lone Star Fund is used and other things are used. And in the meantime, we'll continue to work on this. We'll continue to get more details from Johnson because we know we have to do that. And we'll continue to work with everybody else to see where, exactly where we are. But at the end of the day, the court is going to have to make a, a commitment for some type of financing to get this thing done and get these things prepared. Because we saw this morning, we came to work this morning not thinking we're going to have a problem and we walk into a courthouse that the chiller's down. And this could happen anytime. So with the court's permission, we'll get Noe down here, the meeting, the first meeting we have, we'll ask him for a detailed report. We'll ask Juan to continue to work on options from his side that he has suggested. Any suggestions you guys from Johnson Controls can make to help us get this thing narrowed down? And we know we're, we're looking at, at your laundry list of chillers and tower and all this other stuff and I'm going to suggest we don't fix a little bit, we fix it all. And that way the court doesn't have to look at in the future like that. But if that's all right with you all, we don't have enough information this morning to even start to think about making a decision, except that it's going to have to be done. And then with Noe coming down and with the other information we have, hopefully, early on in our October meetings, we'll be able to start making some firm decisions. And you looked at that timeline, 120 days to do this and six months and all the other things. Ideally, you'd want this thing up and running before June of next year, before summer, when it really sets in. So is that all right with the court to do that? Because we, we want to get every bit of information we can for you and us on cost and suggestions of repair and debt service and everything else, if that's all right. Is that okay with you all?
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it. Keep working for us because we're not there yet.
We had a motion for that?
No, I think, I think, I think we can do it without a motion, can't we? All, all I'm doing is just, is presentation. All right. Thank you, guys. Keep working for us. Juan, you know where you are. We got it, we got to get some good answers. And Kristen, you and Dale and I will keep on pushing the envelope here. Okay. Thank you all very, very much. Uh, number seven, as you recall, the one thing we didn't do when we approved the policies of the court was this 25%. We called Dale, Kristen and I called Noe specifically for that. We called Dale, Kristen and I called Noe specifically for that. He said he would certainly advise against making any changes right now because of the way it would look to the rating agencies. He said, you guys need a good year. And he said, to change anything right now would send the wrong message. So I'm going to make the motion, we use 25%. If I can get a second. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, both same sign. Thank you.
Do I need to read that, Laura? Okay. Okay. This is the Commissioners' Court Resolution and Order Establishing Financial Guidelines for Minimum General Fund Reserves, whereas sound fiscal policies are crucial to enabling the county to maintain its long-term financial stability and excellent bond rating, and whereas ad verum tax revenues are normally not collected until mid-December each year, and as such, adequate fund reserves are required to provide operating monies for the first three months of each fiscal year. Now, therefore, be it resolved in order by the Commissioners' Court of Nuones County, Texas, that it is the court's continued goal for budget year 2018, 2019, to maintain a minimum general fund reserve of 25% of general fund budgeted revenues and transfers.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Number eight, who's going to handle number eight?
I'm, I'm going to start it, and then we're going to have a couple other people-
Okay, good.
-chime in. Okay. So this is to discuss and consider course of action related to former precinct number four constable's office located at 430 North Alister in Port Aransas. Just to give the court a little bit of background on this, this building, which is, as I mentioned, located on 430 North Alister in Port Aransas, it was the Nuones County and Justice of the Peace Building until 1994, and then we built, we built a joint law enforcement center with the city of Port Aransas. The Alister Building was built originally around 1951. It was being leased by the city of Port Aransas for a dollar a year, and it was just being used as a computer center, and only a portion of the building was being used. Due to the damage from Hurricane Harvey, no one has occupied it since, since the hurricane, and it is in complete disrepair. And Nuones County did terminate the lease with the city effective August 8th of 2018. There are a few options that are being looked at on how to handle this building, possibly demolish the building and sell the land later, sell it as is, and then there's also some insurance money in the mix as well. So I'm going to turn this over to Juan and then Timothy to, to go over their options.
Okay, guys.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Yes, there is some insurance involved in this. Total 100% value of this property, insured value is $373,000. With content, there is content in the building. We're trying to decipher who's, who it owns since that person that was renting it only had a portion of it, but there's a lot more material in there. So that's another $19,000. The question came up with Juan about, was there asbestos in the building? And that's dependent upon the insurance and things of that nature as well, Judge. So right now, we're looking at $392,000, a total value, insured value on that building right now.
Okay. Is that collectible?
Going to try, Judge.
Okay. Juan?
Aye. Commissioners, Judge.
And commissioners, by the way, I went over to that building. I did not go inside the building, because the city manager, Port Aransas, said, don't go in there, because you're going to make you sick. There's too much mold and asbestos and everything else, so I didn't try to go in there and look at it. But I can see the pictures.
Yes, sir. And Judge, I don't know, and Commissioner, I don't know if you want me to go through the pictures?
No, no, it's all right.
Based on the, the existing, it's a 3,500 square foot building, and to demo the building, it probably, we got an informal proposal for about $21,200 to demo the existing building. Before you do that, we have to do an asbestos survey. For the asbestos survey, you're looking about $1,500 to do the asbestos survey. And then based on the findings, if there's any asbestos in the building, then that'll be an additional cost to remove whatever asbestos there is in the building, if there's any asbestos, from the flooring to the ceiling tiles and probably up to the roof. So that costs might vary, because at this time, we don't know if there is asbestos in that, in that building or not. So that'll, so that would probably be an additional cost.
So even if there, say there is asbestos, and you were just to tear it down, would you have to-
Yes, ma'am.
Really?
Because you would have to package it up tight and put it in a separate container and send it out.
How much do you think that'll cost?
Commissioner, don't worry. I kind of got an informal cost, depending on the floor tile, you're probably looking anywhere from $5,000 maybe? And then in the ceiling tiles, you're probably looking about another seven? And then depending on what you find in the sheetrock and all that other stuff, yeah. So it can burn.
Aye.
Is there any way we could sell that building as is?
I'm not sure.
Do we, I mean, because we, do we have to get an asbestos or survey done before we try to sell it?
I think if you're going to try to sell it, you, you have an obligation to notify the buyers out there in, in the whole process of selling it. But I mean, you don't have to remove anything.
So if I added that up quickly, you're talking about maybe $50,000 to, to tear the building down?
Yes, sir. If there's asbestos.
If there's, and you can bet there is in that old building.
And who would want to buy it with asbestos?
Ah, nobody. But Commissioner Chesney had one, know if we could, you know, just sell it as is, and I don't think we can. If, Timothy, if we think we're going to be able to collect $300,000 plus on the insurance, when will we know that? What's the deal there?
Well, sir, I have been in contact, we have spoken to the adjuster about this property here, and I was waiting on the determination from the court. My original intent was we were going to tear it down. So if we're going to tear it down, those numbers will definitely change. All I need to know is what the court decides to do, and then I'll move forward with the adjuster.
If we tear it down, it goes back to actual cash value-
Yes, sir.
-rather than replacement costs-
That is correct.
And, and I have no idea how much the replacement cost provision is, but it's, it's substantial. The ACV on that building is what? Do we know? Have they given us a number on that?
No, no, they haven't, because they, what we're still waiting for is to get the dimension. It's 2,700 square feet. We needed dimensions of the rooms, so you know how all that works, Judge, so.
Hundred dollars square foot? Two hundred?
It's about around 132 off the top of my head from the last time I looked at it.
Yeah, I thought so, too.
Yes, sir. It's 133, actually, I got it written down, so.
So that'd be ACV, actual cash value. Take 50 off, tear it down, we'd still own the lot?
We still own the lot, still own the lot, minus the deductible, of course. I'd be right around 150 to 175. That's just a-
Less the cost to-
Yes, sir.
Tear it down. What do you guys think?
How much is the lot valued at?
I'm not sure the actual-
We don't know. It's a great lot. It's right in the right place in Port Aransas.
I'm not sure how much the lot's actually-
Well, I just like the idea of tearing the sucker down and selling it, selling the lot.
I'm, I'm with you, but if, God, I hate to do this, but, but if we get enough insurance proceeds to pay for the demolition and get the lot cleaned off, we still come out ahead something, because there'd be some money left, and we still own the lot. Commissioners, I, you know, my recommendation to the court is, we get with somebody and let's get this thing torn down, get all the bids on it, and, but let's get our insurance money.
I have a motion, I second.
If, if we can do that. You know, we got to put, we got to push the insurance company, let's get our money, because we're going to use every bit of that money to do what we have to do to get the lot cleaned off. And then, then we'll have a lot, and then Commissioner Chesney and everybody can decide if they want to try to sell the lot or whatever.
Well, sir.
Let's, let's move on that, get us an actual cash value on that quickly.
Yes, sir.
And Juan, you go ahead and try to get us some firm numbers, will you please? Bring all this back to court in the first meeting in October. I'd really like to move on this quickly. All right? All right. Thank you all. Thank you. Number nine.
Do you want to vote?
Huh?
Vote.
All in favor?
You had a motion, Judge.
Well, that's my course of action, motion. That is second. All in favor? Aye, both same sign. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that, Laura. Okay. Tech dot, the airport. John, how are you?
Judge. The resolution is for a new fuel farm at the airport.
Right.
It's a Tech Dot project, 75-25 split. Most of my sleep that I lose over the airport is the in-ground tank for environmental reasons.
So this, this picture that's up on the screen right now, this is what we currently have?
Yep.
And the, the proposal is to work with Tech Dot for a new fuel farm, and this is an example of what one would look like once it's installed.
That looks good.
Yes.
Who do we have to kill? No, seriously, what, what, where do we go from here?
So, so what we need to do is, there's, there's a resolution, Judge, that I can read, and then you'll need to sign. And this would get, this would basically give Tech Dot permission to, to start going forward on this project. There, there already is funds set aside for this. The judge set part of his CO funds aside.
How much is the county's portion?
The total project's about 820. I think Tech Dot pays $600,000, and then we pay the remainder.
And I said it's about $3 million originally for airport improvements.
Oh, wow.
We've used a bunch of that. I don't know that, we, we have at least enough left.
Oh, yes, yes. Mm-hmm.
John, this is important. I'm going to make the motion, we approve the resolution, and we'll get that done. But I, I really would like to see Tech Dot help us get that thing moving, because that's going to make a quantum difference in what we do at that airport.
Yes, sir. It will. It'll make a big difference.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, both same sign. Stay with us now. Don't let them loose. All right. Okay. Christopher, or who's going to talk?
Melissa's talking.
Melissa, are you talking today? We're delighted to have you both here. Number 10.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Morning.
We're going to make this quick, that way you can continue to move on. We are presenting our Annex A. We want you to consider accepting this. We do our annexes, which are part of our emergency management plan, so we do those annexes for all the different components that we cover as an Office of Emergency Management. They expire every five years. We're a little bit early on this one, but Christopher and myself are trying to get in a good rotation where we're not doing all of the annexes at one time. In particular, the warning annex addresses just the organizational and operational concepts of warning dissemination to the public and to our local and, and elected officials, how we do that, and it also expresses the different steps and procedures for whether it's preparation, response, or recovery. And that just lays out all of the different operations and, and the responsibilities of, of warning messaging for disasters before and after.
Okay. Any changes? Any material changes?
The only changes we made were very minimal changes to dates and names and phone numbers, but everything else in the plan remains the same from the one that was approved in 2015.
Very good. I'd like to make the motion, we accept Plan Annex A as presented by the Emergency Management Coordinator. All in favor? Aye, both same sign. And let me tell you, Commissioners, these two people do a tremendous amount of work for us, and if you get a chance, you need to look at some of these documents, because they're very, very, very well done. And thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number 11, we've tabled, right? Okay. Number 12. Somebody help me with 12. Here you go. Julie, excuse me.
I'd like to ask that we not have to max out the Sheriff's Department for those particular positions of chief deputy, assistant chief deputies, and captains on their accrual of their vacation this year. We talked about this a few weeks ago, but we just brought it back to handle it the correct way with the correct positions of the chief deputy, assistant deputies, and captain positions. The other positions have already gone to Civil Service Commission, and they've already agreed to allowing those to not max out this year. So I just want to bring these three different positions for y'all to vote on those.
And so we're, we're not maxing them out? That's the-
Correct. They'll be able to carry over their vacation time to next year without losing it.
So lieutenant and below goes to civil service then?
Correct. And those have already been approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Very good. Questions, Julie?
We're doing this because of-
They had several vacancies this past year, and because of that, the employees were not able to take vacation time, because they were having to cover those extra hours for other employees that, of course, did not exist.
Is this going to happen next year?
It shouldn't happen. The Sheriff's Department's numbers have really, the vacancies have really decreased these past few weeks, and we're testing more frequently, so the vacancies are being filled.
I guess you need a motion, don't you?
Yes, sir.
All right. I have that motion. Do I have a second? All questions? You know, all in favor? Aye, both same sign. Juvenile?
Thank you.
Homer, you've been here a while.
Good morning, Ronnie.
Judge, Commissioners.
You got tabled.
This potential position involves our facility administration, or both our facilities, and I wanted to introduce Josh Moreno and Sid Adizmendez. They're our facility administrators. Sid will be presenting this agenda item.
Good, good. Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Like Homer said, my name is Sid. I'm the facility administrator for the juvenile detention facility or the pre-adjudication facility. The reason we're here this morning is, we are asking that you consider creating an unfrozen compliance monitoring officer position in the Texas Juvenile Justice Department Fund. Just a little background, we currently have a vacant and unfrozen juvenile probation officer position. We are asking that this position be eliminated and repurposed for this monitoring and compliance officer position. This position will be budget neutral. It'll be, the salary for this position will be 100% paid out of the state funds from, that we receive from TJJD. Just some responsibilities that this position would entail is to be responsible for the preparation of our annual audits with the state for both facilities. Also included will be to conduct random audits of the facilities daily, going to check, make sure everything is in accordance with state standards, policies, procedures. Every shift, every day, there's observation checks on residents to ensure that it, no suicide attempts happen or any, that the juvenile's welfare is just maintained within state standards. Another responsibility that they'd be responsible for is reviewing and evaluating current programs, policies, procedures, practices on an ongoing daily basis, and amending it as needed. They will be planning, developing policies to enhance efficiency and effectiveness, monitoring both facilities, both pre and post. They'll inspect facilities for safety, security, sanitation purposes, and address any inconsistencies with staff, supervisors, and report back to us. Another main thing is training. If there's any policy infractions, training the staff to show and keeping up to date with both federal, state, and local laws that go with their jobs and facilities between both facilities. And they'll also be designated as the fire safety officer. They'll be responsible for keeping fire drill logs, inspections of the facility's life safety systems, the ventilation cleanliness that, that's maintained, as well as being designated as the PRIA officer. PRIA is the Prison Rape Elimination Act that was passed by Congress in 2003. And that's it for that position.
Very good.
How many officers do you have, juvenile probation officers?
At the juvenile detention facility, we have 28.
You don't need this other one that was frozen?
No. The position that we're asking to be eliminated is the actually juvenile probation officer.
Was this far out of the budget? We did some changes over there. No, this was different?
It was overtime.
Okay, 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 okay. All right. Any other questions? I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second, sorry.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? See none, all in favor? Aye, both same sign. Thank you. Thanks for waiting, guys. I know it's been a long morning. Yep, you bring a sandwich, Homer? Thank you. No, do you? Thanks, guys.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Say, we're here to see about an award for the copy paper, computer paper, NCR paper in envelopes. This is all the paper products that are needed to provide stationary and documents, forms for the county, for all the different departments. There was a spreadsheet attached to this agenda item, and we were, we are going, recommending that it be awarded to Gulf Coast Paper Company at the lowest cost for all the, for the overall, all the items. And that item four point one and four point four be left, one of them was a no bid, the other one is the, the paper needs to be a certain, this kinda sounds strange, but stiff. It has to be a stiff, even though it's eighty pound, that paper needs to be stiff in order to do the business cards. The, the paper that was bid is an eighty pound, which is what the paper that we use to make business cards are. It's just that the, that the brand, that they're not, we've tried it before, it's not stiff enough. And so we just, since it's such a small quantity and a small dollar amount, we'd like to keep that as an open market item.
Okay. You ready for us to vote?
Yes, sir. Gulf Coast.
Gulf Coast?
Yes, sir.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, concerns, see none, all in favor? Aye, both same sign. Good job. Thank you. Alter?
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners. I'm here presenting, requesting the approval of the budget change order number twenty-three is for the allocation of funds, mainly to cover core costs, outstanding POs, anticipating expenses through the rest of the fiscal year, and office expenses. That's approval for change order number twenty-three. And also, we have the capital projects change order number seventy-one. We closing out some, several completed projects, and also we are allocating a hundred and eighty thousand for a settlement that was approved last month at Commissioners Court. Do you have any questions?
Questions? Anyone?
I guess it's, because it's the end of the year, so it seems like we have a lot of
Exactly.
change orders compared to normal, so, okay. Motion.
I need a second. Okay, all in favor? Aye, both same sign. Thank you. How do I get Ronnie back up here since I've gone by number eleven? He wants to talk. Do I have to reopen number eleven? We tabled it.
Public comment?
Yeah, you would have, well, public comments, but you won't have to ask, you won't be able to ask questions, but public comments.
I'm gonna make a motion, reopen, reopen public comments, if y'all might. Could I have a second to that, please? All in favor? Aye, both same sign. Good morning, Ronnie, how are you?
Oh, good morning, Judge.
Thank you for being here.
Doing real well. Just wanted to come by and share some information with you.
Okay.
And the court. We just had a meeting with Flint Hills as far as our lawsuits are concerned. For the years twenty sixteen and seventeen, we reached an agreement for a settlement. There's no refunds. Everything remains the same. So we're out for the years twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen. I also want to say thank you for your patience, for allowing us to do what we need to do as the appraisal district. We appreciate the fact that you, Judge, allows us to do what we have to do. We do not, in the future, just so we know, we do not particularly get involved with individual elected officials as to what statuses are with litigation, especially when an entity is part of that lawsuit. What we try and do is work with them directly. And then once we get through with that lawsuit or with that problem, then we come back and address it to the entity, and that has responsibility on that. Entity can be the City of Corpus, the County of Oasis, farm-to-market and hospital district, the school district, whether it be in this case, it's in Talosa Midway. As of right now, they are making a phone call to the superintendent to let them know that we have reached an agreement and that everything is the way it's supposed to be. They wanna be good citizens like they normally are, and they wanna extend that olive branch to make sure that we continue in good harmony and good communication from here forward. And we have no problems with that. So that started about ten thirty this morning, and about twenty, thirty minutes ago, we just finished. We had the attorneys from them, which was Mr. Cleaver and Mr. Guy Tony, as well as Scott, and then Brent is their, their tax consultant. We were all in the same meeting, and everything came to a close as of today, for at least the years twenty sixteen and seventeen. Okay? Other than that, we look forward to the following years, which would be eighteen and forward. We do know that the industry, as of this year and the previous years, their values have gone up. For the year eighteen, we're looking at the fact that Valero got increased about two hundred and twenty-one million from two years ago to now. Flint Hills also got raised by about a hundred and fifty million for those years, for the year eighteen. Right now, we're litigating with Valero. We have instructed, we had a phone call from one of the jurisdictions yesterday, as far as other entities wanting to come by and have meetings with them in reference to possibly Valero. You need to understand one thing with Valero, they have a new ad valorem section. Their new employees, their new staff, they're, they're not there like they used to be. One of their main cogs who retired, his name is Roy Martin, he works for us now. And then that also sheds light into what kind of values these refineries also has. So saying all that, we, we ask the jurisdictions that are involved in litigation to make sure that if they come to you to discuss value, that you need to tell them, they need to go see Mr. Wheat, the attorney for the appraisal district, or the appraisal district itself. That way, we can do what we have to do. And that way, a lot of things do not get in the way. Because we are independent of any entity that's here in Oasis County. We are supposed to do the job, and that job is to make sure that we provide the best information that we can provide to you. And that's what we try and do and strive for every day.
Absolutely.
Other than that, I'm here on a, on a public deal to where you can ask any questions. But I will tell you this, Judge, they were very good. They, they wanted to do this, and it's with time and patience that they did what they had to do.
Very good.
Okay?
Good job.
So, thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Well, that's good news, I think. Okay. No executive session? One item? Okay. Commissioners Court may go into executive session at any time, but I was supposed to on the agenda. We will now go into executive session under the authority of Vernon's Texas Code, Sections oh seven one, I'm sorry, five five one, oh seven one, oh seven two, oh seven three, oh seven four, oh seven four five, oh seven six, oh eight six, oh eight seven, twenty-five minutes to one. Thank you. Mic is off. Mic is on. Back in session 10, quarter, 12, it's sometime today, quarter to one, I think. We're on item number, executive session item number 5A. Like to make the motion that we authorize the county attorney to appeal. That's all you need? I got a second, all in favor? Aye, both same side. Are we gonna table 6A?
6A.
Somebody has said that.
Why 6A?
Well, the whole court ought to be here to vote on that, so. Motion to table. All in favor? Aye, both same side. Now, we're gonna vote on that next time, one way or another, because we dragged this out way too far. Yeah, New West County Historical Commission?
You have one applicant, Chelsea Ray Aldrete.
So move. All in favor? Aye, both same side. Animal Advisory Committee?
You have two applicants, Chris Cooper and Lisa Bachhold. Recommend appointing both.
Any questions? Need a motion? All in favor? Aye, both same side, thank you. That takes care of everything, Commissioner? Oh, Commissioners, county attorney, are we okay? All right. Very good. Anything else? Anyone have anything to adjourn in memory of today?
I do, Judge.
Good, John, please. Please.
Few that we hadn't recognized with all our busy meetings we've had the last month or so. Passing, remember the passing of Elizabeth Martinez-Ramon. Also Ruben De Leon. Ruben was an employee with Oasis County for 27 years. Ruben Vallejo was employed with the Texas Mexican Railway for many years. And Leo Salas-Ramon, big Robstown cotton picker fan. And lastly, on a personal note, my dad's youngest sister passed away on Friday, my Aunt Debbie, and we buried her yesterday, had a, had a great celebration of life. And I was telling the bishop earlier that Father David gave the homily, and it was just a beautiful send-off, beautiful service. So continue, think of my uncle, and my cousins, and my dad, and all my family, my grandfather who's still alive, as we continue to mourn and think of her. Thank you.
Thank you. John, I'm sorry.
Indulgence to the family, John, in my prayers. But I also had Elizabeth Ramon, so I, I just, again, John already mentioned her, so. She was 40 years at Robstown Elementary School District, so she served her time in the education field, so, again, her prayers to the family.
Carolyn, anyone?
No, I don't.
Stand for a moment. Thank you, mic is off.